All right, welcome everyone. I call the September fifteenth, twenty twenty regular city council meeting to order. Before we move on to the items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation twenty dash twenty-eight regarding open public meetings was extended through October first. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and cause a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone and callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. At this moment, at this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position. City clerk?
Please say yea or nay when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yay.
Councilmember McCollough.
Yay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yay.
Mayor Olson.
Yay.
Councilmember Dour.
Here.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Yay.
All present, thank you.
All right, lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please be clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video, please turn down the sound, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For our council members, if you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen. I'll call you as I see them. This will help you avoid the problem of two people speaking at that same time. So our first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to presentations and reports. We have our public engagement opportunities. All right, our upcoming public engagement opportunities, September through November is salmon season. Visit North Creek to look for spawning salmon, sign up as a volunteer citizen scientist to help Udo Bothel collect information about local salmon. And natural yard care online workshops. First one is September thirtieth, seven to eight thirty, design a healthy yard. All right, on to our next item, proclamations. So I'll do the National Pollution Prevention Week proclamation first, and then we'll save the best for last, Mr. Bruce Blackburn. So our first proclamation this evening, National Pollution Prevention Week. Whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency acknowledges National Pollution Prevention Week in honor of the United States Congress passing the Pollution Prevention Act in nineteen ninety. And whereas the Pollution Prevention Act encourages pollution prevention by reducing or eliminating eliminating waste at the source by modifying production processes, promoting the use of non-toxic or less toxic substances, implementing conservation techniques and reusing materials rather than adding them to the waste stream. And whereas the city council's environmental goal is to protect the natural environment through integrated natural resource management. And whereas the city of Bothel implements programs that aim to reduce and prevent pollution generated by businesses, residents, and municipal operations by partnering with the community to protect our environment, including our wetlands, streams, lakes, and rivers. Now therefore, I, Liam Olson, Mayor of Bothel, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty first through the twenty seventh, twenty twenty as National Pollution Prevention Week in the city of Bothel, Washington, and call upon all citizens to protect natural resources by reducing and eliminating sources of pollution. All right, on to our second. Bruce Blackburn appreciation. Whereas Bruce Blackburn joined the city of Bothel as an assistant planner on March twenty-third, nineteen eighty-seven, when the city's population was nine thousand four hundred and ninety-five. And whereas Bruce has honorably served the citizens of Bothel for over thirty-three years, during which time the population has increased to four thousand four hundred. And whereas Bruce has distinguished himself throughout his career through the quality of his work, the breadth and depth of his knowledge, and the respect he has earned from his colleagues, managers, elected officials, applicants, and members of the public. And whereas Bruce's dedication to a consistently high level of customer service, thorough staff work and quality development has made a significant contribution to the Bothel community. And whereas Bruce has been a friend and mentor to his colleagues, encouraging their own professional growth. And whereas Bruce was a major contributor to development of the first Imagine Bothel Comprehensive Plan in nineteen ninety-four under the State Growth Management Act. And whereas Bruce led a major rewrite of the Bothel Municipal Code, creation of the city's first tree retention ordinance, major updates to the Sparkline Master Program and Critical Area Regulations, and most recently, major update of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. And whereas we celebrate Bruce's invaluable contributions of service and friendship. And whereas we wish Bruce all the best as he retires from the city and enjoys the next chapter of his life. Now therefore, I, Liam Olson, Mayor of Bothel, the city of Bothel, do hereby proclaim the city of Bothel's appreciation to Bruce Blackburn for his many contributions to the city of Bothel and our greater community.
Thank you. I, I hope you know the Hawaiian shirt, Mason. And I actually do have something that is big wave. So I, I'm ready.
You're enjoying retirement already.
Yes, that, actually, that's happened the first day, or I'm sorry. Yeah, it was immediate, it was immediate. Unfortunately, the first three weeks we had to get ready for a wedding that we held in my back, our backyard, so that was a little bit of a I jumped right into the frying pan.
Hey Bruce, we're gonna have to take a quick pause. Looks like we're having a technical challenge with broadcasting. So we'll just take a five-minute break hopefully, and we'll be back at six fifteen.
Oh yeah, you disappeared.
All right, welcome back. Looks like we've resolved our technical difficulties. So we'll just give everyone a minute or two to come back on. Bruce, we'll get this, we'll get this figured out and we'll get, we'll get you celebrated here.
That's, that's okay. I, I use the time to look at my vacations to go dot com email. Oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't nice.
All right, I think Director Kaderman has a presentation.
Hello, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, uh. We had hoped to surprise Bruce with his proclamation back in July before he left. And obviously, that didn't work out. But we wanted to have at least a little bit of a surprise for Bruce, so I'm gonna try some technological wizardry here. Wish me luck, we'll see if this actually works. Hopefully you can see my screen.
Whoa. That's amazing.
Are you able to see my screen? Bruce, can you see everyone?
I can.
Okay, everybody. You can say hi to Bruce now.
Wow, all kinds of people there.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. That was great.
Hello? Yep. Oh. So dinner sauce and salad. Any more of those pills?
We all, we all still we're starting several blocks. But, but and
What? When I first came to work thirty-three years
say hi to Bruce.
All right, I know we had some other council members had some things they'd like to say. Perhaps I will give Director Kaderman a moment to smooth out his tech. Deputy Mayor Zornz. I know you
I didn't even raise my card, but you must have remembered that I have I have notes here. Where is Bruce in my square? He disappeared. There he is. Okay, so Bruce, you may have gotten some of these already, but these are from some of Bothel's oldies, and I thought I should share them with other people. They probably, a lot of people know them. So the first one is from Anne Agard. And she wrote, "As a member of the Bothel community, we are appreciative of the planning staff in Bothel who consider themselves members of this historic community." Doesn't this sound like Anne? "And engage in our lives in multiple ways. Bruce, whom I first knew as the father of young twins." How old are your twins now?
Thirty-five.
Oh my goodness, okay. "Has contributed to our community as a member and as an employee in multiple ways over the years. He has always been pleasant and helpful, willing to discuss projects and implementation with citizens. We are fortunate to have had Bruce as a, as a staff member and fellow citizen. Thank you, Bruce, and best wishes to you in your retirement." Then the next one is from Pat Pierce, who is always, you know, short on words, but says, says a lot in a few words. And she wrote, "I think you first started, I think when you first started, you were the original member of the Human Services Committee where you did a great job getting to know the providers and community needs. You've always been easy to work with." Next one is from Ernie Bellacy. And he wrote, "You were a great teacher for this neophyte planning commissioner back in two thousand and four." That is very true. I mean, not just Ernie. "At each meeting, you were always prepared, answered all our questions, and just made each meeting a joy to talk with during the breaks and after the meetings. I wish you all the best in your retirement." The next one is from Tris Sandberg. And she wrote, "Bruce was one of my favorite staff." That was with exclamation marks. "I learned so much about planning and zoning under his consistent guidance. Is there a planning document in the city that Bruce hasn't written?" Probably not. "Despite working in what could be often contentious environment with lots of different ideas, Bruce worked diligently to produce documents for our review, all the while being respectful to the public, council, and his peers. If I asked a stupid question or had a bat crazy idea, he certainly never let on. Best of luck, Bruce, on a well-earned retirement." That was from Tris. And the last one is from Joyce, who, you know, can be a little salty. Joyce and Walt Wojcik. Bruce and, well, not the last, second to last, because I'm the last, but this is from Joyce and Walt. She wrote, "Bruce and I had a seventeen-year-long relationship, and I bless him and thank him for putting up with all my endless amounts of corrections and reviews of codes." I saw some of those. Ordinances, rewrites, comprehensive plan, happy retirement. I'm sure she made you work. So this is from me. This is from me. You are simply the best. And
And I learned a lot of interesting English from Joyce.
I bet you did. She is never short on words. So this is for me. You are simply the best. And, and, and if, as they say, is really true, you broke the mold. We're in a world of hurt. You are the gold standard of graciousness and professionalism. You have poured into Bothel thoughtful guidance, wisdom, knowledge, experience, and sunshine on many cloudy day. My husband benefited from your expertise while he was on council many years ago. Myself as a citizen and planning commissioner and then council. When I reflect on the best of the Bothel list, you are there. I hope and trust that this next adventure into retirement pours into you and your beloveds the best that ties your hearts together, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you for doing you here in Bothel.
Wow, thank you, Jeannie. That was great. I will note, we had a lot of good times on the planning commission.
Yes, yes. I'm in condition.
There were some really good discussions, that's for sure.
Yeah, planning commission, and I don't know that the city entirely knows, but planning commission is where, where, where it's going on.
Yes. Really, and very fun organization to be in.
Yeah, well, you were a good part of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dour.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know how to add on to what Jean said, but I, I do want you to know how much I appreciated the time that you spent explaining things to, neophyte's a great word, a new council member. Back in the first couple of years that I was on council, it was a little rough. We had the Fitzgerald. I don't even know what to call it, drama. And you were so patient, and I just, I can't thank you enough for, for your patience and your hard work and getting us through that to what I consider to be really a signature achievement. By the time we were done, I was so proud of what we accomplished in such a very, very difficult circumstance. And, and the, the sentiment about your smile is so true. You just, you always have a smile on your face and bring sunshine wherever you go. And that will be sorely missed, as well as obviously your immense talent and knowledge and experience, so. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, and I just wish the very best for you.
Wow, thank you, Davina. Although I will note that I think you're the only council member I ever remember who said, "This is really boring, but important." I always said, "Okay, boring, but important, great." Actually, Davina, I think you should take something away from this too, and that is the fact that you and your assistance with some of the other council members got that clustering ordinance gone up past. That's a huge achievement, and I think that we are gonna see, this committee will see benefits long into the future. So I, I, you know, take some kudos for yourselves as well, you guys.
Well, I agree. That was, that was one of the great, kind of almost unintended, unforeseen outcomes of the Fitzgerald thing, though. It just made it really worthwhile, so thanks for that. And I, I didn't mean it, I'm, all I meant was for the normal citizen, it was probably really boring, but you know, weedy stuff can be a little yawn inducing, but it is important.
I, I'm responsible for a lot of that too, unfortunately.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, Bruce, I, I can't tell you how much I've appreciated you in the last eleven years. You've been the consummate professional. You've always smiled. You were always at the end of every agenda meeting. At least you got to the first. I think you are a huge loss to the city, and I just hope that you really enjoy your retirement because it is very well deserved. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart and for the citizens of Bothel.
Wow, thank you, Tom. I will note that you and I went through a lot of very interesting battles over the years. And I think there was a few scars left behind in a couple of places, but I always appreciated how positive you were as well and how you were able to cut to the chase. I really always enjoyed that aspect working with you.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Thompson.
Bruce, we didn't have a long time together, and the year we've had together, it's been an interesting one. And the only thing that is bad about that is that I don't get to spend more time learning from you because the exposure that I've had with you has been simply fantastic. And I don't have the breadth of experience that some of my colleagues up here do, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Well, thank you, Mason. I actually do recall a couple of discussions we had. We actually solved the world's problems. I mean, there was no doubt about the fact that we had it all figured out, so we should become the king of the world.
We can solve every problem, just ask us.
Yeah, that's right, that's it. That was great.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Bruce, not much more I can, can say, it's already been said. I guess for me, coming on council almost five years ago now, just having the opportunity to work with you and see your passion towards our community means a lot. You know, as a, as a new council member, we really don't know what we don't know. But to have you doing the presentations that you do with thoughtfulness and thoroughness truly brings us up to speed pretty quickly as council members to understand how the decisions that we make can affect our community, not only short term, but, but long term. And that long-term planning and thinking is what you helped educate me on. And I, and I would just tell you that we have a very short period of time on this. And we have the time in which we can make an impact. And I think the words that I would like to tell you is that you've made an impact on our community that will last forever. Not just today, not just a lifetime, but forever. So thank you for everything that you've done for the community of Bothel. And I hope that we, we get to share some of your retirement and share with us how you enjoy it.
Wow, thank you, James. You know, I will say this, as a staff member, I always appreciated your questions because they were always really good ones. In fact, unlike other council members in the past, I always looked forward to your questions were so insightful. And it was so fun to get into that, meet at that discussion. I, that, that was a joy for me as well, so thank you very much.
Oh. So Bruce, yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your years of service, your presentations, just your positive attitude that you bring to every council meeting that you come to. You'll be sorely missed. I, I think everyone else, you know, made it abundantly clear how much you'll be missed and how much you give into the city, so I think we just can't say thank you enough.
Wow, thanks, Liam.
And enjoy that retirement.
It's I'm gonna do
It's been well earned.
In fact, I might just be cracking this open pretty soon. But, um, and, you know, Liam, I, I feel kind of bad because we didn't have a chance to do a lot of work on a couple of big projects together. But I was kind of looking forward to doing that with you, because I know that that would have been a really fun dynamic. But thank you, everybody, for doing this. This is, this really makes me feel great. And thirty-three years, I retire. Thank you. See a whole bunch. I see a whole bunch of circles.
Well, we can still see you, and I think we've lost Director Kaderman. But I, yeah, I'll just, I'll just end it with this, you know, with thank you, happy trails, and enjoy retirement. Sounds like you've got plenty of plans and you won't be at a lack of activity.
And I do, and 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 I'll leave you with one of Jennifer's favorite sayings. I know, right? I hear her say that all the time. It was really awesome. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you. Have a great meeting that I will miss. All right, take care. Thank you again.
Oh, man. Big shoes to fill. Was someone saying something? Director Kaderman. All right. Well, let's move on to our next item, staff briefings, State of the Streets with Jack Bartman. Do we have him online here?
Yes, I'm here. Just a minute.
All right, great, welcome.
There we go. My video wasn't starting for some reason. Anyway, not exactly sure I'm supposed to follow that, but I will do my best. Evening, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. I've been asked, I am, my name is Jack Bartman. I work in the Capitol Group and project manager up there, and one of my duties is to manage the pavement preservation program for the city. And every year we do an assessment of the streets. And I would like to take this opportunity to talk some about what we've, where we are and what we've done. We haven't done this in a couple of years. So where this program really got kicked off was during the Safe Streets and Sidewalk Levy of two thousand and seventeen. And that really gave us three things that we didn't have before, or three, three key elements. And one was prior to that, we would either overlay a road or we wouldn't do anything. And that levy and the decisions that went into it allowed us to use some more pavement preservation techniques, such as crack sealing and patching and slurry sealing, instead of having to do a complete overlay. And this gave us a lot, many more economical tools to extend the life of roads. The second thing that it did was it helped us prioritize what we were going to do. The decision was made to concentrate on, I'm going to share my screen here in a second. Did that come, that didn't come through, did it?
Looks like it's trying to share.
Yeah, it worked in practice.
There it is.
All right, can you guys see that? Or is it being weird?
We can all see it.
Okay, you can see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Okay, so what it gave us direction to do was to concentrate in our arterials, which on this map is the colored roads. The all the local streets are all the gray ones. So we have several classes of arterials. And so the, one of the roads that a lot of people don't realize that our arterials are these collectors, the green ones. But those are classified as arterials as well. So the idea was is that we were going to spend all of our overlay money on the arterials. We were going to do a much more aggressive job at doing pavement preservation on those. And we were going to reserve ten percent of the budget to concentrate on local roads. And that's where we have been doing our slurry seal program lately. And the third thing that it did is actually greatly increased the amount of money that we had available to do pavement preservation period. So what I would like to do is to do a so anyway, pavement preservation is actually a fairly complex topic. There's a lot of decisions that need to be made, and so I'm going to focus kind of on the technical side of this to give you guys a primer of how we think about what we think about when we put together a program. So what the main thing that we, the main tool that we use is called a PCI, which is Pavement Condition Index. So every year, we have a van, we have a consultant that has a van that drives half of the roads of the city, and this van is loaded with special cameras that are pointed down to the road. And it counts all the cracks and all the potholes and all the ruts. And it goes into a black box and magic happens, and it gives us a PCI score for that road. And it spits out a map, and this is the center of the city. But it spits on a map like this and a lot of data that gives us a rating for each segment of the road. I realize you can't see this. I just wanted to give you an example of what this looked like. So from this, we have ratings for each segment about whether, you know, how well the road is holding up, how many cracks that it has in it. So this is one of our major tools. And if anybody's ever gotten me going on pavement before, I've probably drawn this on a whiteboard for you somewhere. So this is how PCI works. When you pave a road, the PCI is at a hundred. And then as the road ages, this is sort of nominal years down here. And this varies greatly around the country, so this is kind of a nominal number. But so as the road ages, it's in fairly good shape, it's in fairly good shape, and then all of a sudden it reaches a point where it's worse a lot quicker. Whoops. So what we, what's common is that seventy-five percent of the life of the road, you get you know, there's a forty percent drop. And then the next forty percent drop happens in only twelve percent of the road. So once roads start to fade, they tend to fade rather quickly. So this up at here at a hundred is around new pavement. Down here around seventy-five is where you start to see noticeable cracking. Down here around sixty-five is where you see a lot of prevalent cracking. Down here around fifty is where you start to see alligator cracking and settling. And then down here is where you start to see a bunch of potholes and stuff. And I just want to point out, yeah, like I said before, once you get to this point, the pavement gets deteriorates faster. And the one of the reasons that this happens is that the cracks open up and you get water underneath the road. It's important to note that if we do nothing, the roads get worse. We are definitely standing on a treadmill as far as the conditions of the road goes. So if we do nothing, the roads get worse, and if the roads get worse to a certain point, the treadmill starts to speed up and they get worse faster. So ideally, we like to get the PCI of the roads up here that keeps them lasting longer. And this is actually where we talk about whether we do pavement preservation, overlays or reconstruction. If we do pavement preservation, that means that the road is in fairly good condition, and we're doing what we can to keep it in good condition. If the, if it needs an overlay, that means that well, here's the analogy that I like to use, is that if we're doing pavement preservation, think of it like your house. We are painting the house. That is what pavement preservation is. We're repairing the outside of the you know, we're doing minor repairs and we're painting the house. If we're doing an overlay of the house, then what that means is that we're doing a siding job. We are replacing or covering over the siding of the house. If we're doing a reconstruction job, that means that the siding has failed. The walls underneath are starting to rot. And so we've got to go in and we've got to rip out chunks of rotting wood and rebuild that wall before we can put the siding back on. And so one of the things to note is how much of a difference of cost that is involved. So for instance, when we do our slurry seal project, which is maintenance or, you know, pavement preservation up here, that we can do, that costs only twenty percent as much as doing an overlay. So we can do five times more roadway for a slurry seal than we can if we did a true overlay project. So that's one of the things that makes it so powerful. So one of the questions that we get a lot is why do we fix roads that are in fairly decent condition when you've got a road down the street that's falling apart? And the reason is, is because for a relatively small amount of money, we can extend the life of that road for quite a bit. Whereas the road that's already falling apart, we would have to come up with a pretty serious investment to improve it. So that's why we get a lot of questions about that, about the slurry seal, because the slurry seals do not add any structural elements to the road. What they really do is they provide a sealant, a raincoat for the road, and they provide some more wearing course. There's no structure that goes with the road that would come with asphalt. So just to show you what we've done with the levy is that this is our pavement preservation map. All these colored bars through here are areas that we've done patching and crack sealing to try to extend the life of the roads. This area up here is the Frank Love area. It's our first area that we did as a slurry seal. And down here in King County, we did the Maywood Hills slurry seal and what I've been calling the Lower Norway Hills slurry seal. But all these roads, we have done something to try to extend the life of the pavement for the arterials. And so we've also done some overlays in in the period of the levy from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. So up in almost coming here, we this piece of two twenty-eight on the east side of the freeway. We did this piece on nineteenth, which is associated with pedestrian project with the boardwalk that went in here. And then down here in King County, we did Beardsley, which actually Beardsley was fairly expensive because that actually turned out to be a reconstruction. We we were at the far end of the PCI numbers for that one. And, you know, I threw May Street in here, too. And then we also did this little piece down here on Woodinville Road. And that one was kind of interesting because we found out that that was part of the old nineteen fourteen red brick road. So we had to contend with that. And so what we have coming up for the planned arterials for the rest of the levy is we're going to do a lot of the rest of two twenty-eighth. And there's a lot more in King County, down here on Juanita, Woodinville Road, and up on one hundred and ninety-fifth. And one of the things I wanted to point out about these choices of these roads is that there are grants that are available to us from the PSRC, from the Puget Sound Council. That's a funneling of federal money that we can compete for so that we can leverage our local dollars and get the most bang for our buck. And their guidance, where you get the points for this, the rules are, is that there roads that tend to serve regional areas and the freeway. So you'll notice a lot of these roads are the ones that go to the interchanges. And they also serve things like the combined campus and the Norpre Business Park and roads that lead to other cities. And two twenty-eight is a major east-west corridor for this part of the county. So that's what our plan is. Some observations that I would like to share with you is that we do have a target to get the arterials up to a point of eighty. And the reason that we want to do that is so that we get up here so that we can start doing these kind of maintenance projects, which is minimal investment to keep the pavement in good condition for a long time. And that is sort of a sweet spot where if we make the investment to get our arterials to this point, then goal is to have a minimal investment to keep the roads there. We probably will not, well, I'd say, our plan shows that we will not get there by two thousand and twenty-five. We are working on ways to get there closer and earlier. But before two thousand and twenty-five, when the current levy ends, the city will have to readdress funding for this program. At some point, the city will also have to discuss how we are going to handle local roads. This decision has been deferred. The decision was not to address local roads at the time of the levy. And just do remember that the longer that we put this off, the worse the roads get. And then if we move to a point where we're reconstructing all these roads instead of overlaying them, costs to do that go up, you know, can go up two or three times the amount. This is a daunting issue. This is, we are far from the only ones who are dealing with this. I meet with a group of colleagues that were the pavement people for all the, for a lot of the surrounding cities. We we call ourselves the alligators. But this is a main topic that we talk about on how to leverage our monies and how to use our monies. And it's actually, it's been a great resource to find out what other people do. But I would like to say that this is a nationwide problem. We are not alone. And as with the last levy, the city may not be able to maintain all of its roads, and we will have to make choices. We will have to prioritize. The what last thing I'd like to leave you with is if you'd like to know more of the details of the Bothell roadway system, the latest State of Streets, State of the Streets report is available on our city website. And now I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for you. On the map that we saw earlier that had the different color codes for the PCI scores, on the neighborhood roads, is is there a way that we can future estimate costs based on the condition of roads right now? Like, is there a way we can look at this and say, you know, we're going to spend X amount over the next X amount of years for red versus yellow versus green?
Yes, absolutely. That's, we did that exercise for the arterials. We are actually in the process, now that we have several years of data gathering, to refine and improve that on the arterials. We have, we do have an idea of what the backlog is for roadway improvements, but we have not specifically done that exercise for the arterials, but we certainly could. I mean, the the site or the techniques are there.
When you say the improvements backlogs, do you just, you mean maintenance, not necessarily making facilities, like adding facilities?
Part of what, part, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
You probably kept me from rambling on and asking you. So thank you.
We, there is part of the exercise of the State of the Streets where we say, okay, if we would fix every road in the city, how much would it cost? And so that number is in the State of the Streets.
Got it. Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
It's about a hundred and thirty million dollars.
And do we know how long, like, if we did that and we just, like, had a money fairy and every road was brand new, how long we would expect those roads to last for that price?
Well, if we, it it goes back to maintenance, and if we are able And if we are able to, and this is an exercise that I have not done, so I, I couldn't even guess what that number would be. But if we were able to find a way to keep good pavement preservation techniques on that, then that would last, you know, decades. If we did, if we just paved everything and did nothing, it would probably be in the 15 to 20 year range.
Okay. One other question I had is in the, the graph where it talked about condition where we could like do a slurry seal and kind of keep it up toward the top. Like, yeah, yeah, the spending $1 on preservation here and the arrow that points toward that. How long can we keep going on that?
Quite a while. We, it, it depends on the preservation techniques that you're using. For instance, one of the techniques that are done in a lot of other places is known as a chip seal. And people have been doing that and you can just keep layering and layering and layering those for a long time. That is not been popular in residential areas because it tends to make a really rough road. Skateboarders hate it.
So, so do cyclists.
There are other ways, there are other treatments that can be done other than chip seals. There's cape seals, which are a chip seal with asphalt overlay on the top and some other things like that. One of the things that I didn't talk about is requirements change when you do a maintenance activity than when you do an improvement activity. And so if you'll notice, every time we do an overlay, we've got to improve all of the sidewalk ramps to modern ADA standards. And if you do a slurry seal or patching, you don't have to do that. If you go as far as to do a cape seal or a overlay, you do. And you know, ramps cost $10,000 to $14,000 apiece and that adds up quickly.
Yep. What percentage of our neighborhood roads are kind of below the condition where we can keep it going with a slurry seal?
I, I don't know a percentage. I can tell you that I've got about three more neighborhoods that we can do like that. And then we're going to run out of neighborhoods that we can do.
Okay.
Then the rest of them are just too degraded.
Okay. I mean, I guess the question I'm asking is, you know, you, you, you kind of hinted that we have a bit of a problem here into the future and we're going to need to identify a funding source for it. Like, how bad is it, I guess, is my question.
It's not great. I, I, I mean, I, I really don't know how to quantify that, but we, we certainly have areas that we need to address. We certainly have priorities that we need to do. Some of my biggest challenges are roads like Holly Hills. And because those are technically local roads, so I don't have a funding source for them. But they need, you know, it's going to cost a million dollars to redo Holly Hills. And I, we do not have that. And so that's going to be, have to be figured out in some way. The cul-de-sacs that have four or five houses on them, quite honestly, I don't, I don't know how we're going to get there. No matter how we plan it. So yes, it's, it's daunting.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorins.
I think you may have already answered one, one of my questions. I think Nathan may have addressed it. So I'm going to circle back to it in a second. Audio was cutting out on me. Thank you, Jack, for this presentation, by the way. I was doing all kinds of screenshots here so I can come back and look at the, the charts there. But did I, did I understand you right that the target is to get arterials up to an 80 PCI? And then, and then just maintain them from there with seals as time goes on? Or the audio was cutting in and out on my end and I was, I didn't catch.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I.
I, I didn't catch everything you were saying there.
Ideally, if we can get our arterials up to approaching an 80, that would allow us to decrease the amount of money that we spend yearly addressing our arterial roads because we could do the much more economical pavement preservation techniques instead of having to do overlays.
Okay, all right, that, that makes a lot of sense. How much time on your, you know, whatever our typical average slurry seal is that we put up on, on our roads? How much time does that buy us about?
Well, we've only got about four years, three years of direct experience on that. But Kirkland has been doing this for well over a decade. And so they've got 10-year-old slurry seals that are holding up very well.
Oh, okay. All of a sudden, I feel like we're talking about teeth, but yeah, that, that, that's, that's very encouraging to know that they hold up. And then the other question, the last question that I have is an overlay, does, when we do an overlay on a road, does that put a road back up on 100 PCI?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay. All right, that's, that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I always am fascinated and discouraged by these presentations. And you may have covered this or you may not know the answer, but I'm curious. So the, the levy ends in 2025. So obviously we have plans for what we intend or hope to get done by then. How many arterials or miles will we not have covered for arterials at that point?
I have not added stuff up that way. I don't know. We, okay, I, what, but this is what I will tell you. Is that most of our, what are referred to as minor, okay, so our primary arterial through the city is 405. That's not our responsibility. And also then we've got the state is responsible for 522 and it's also responsible for 527, which is, you know, Bothell, the Bothell Everett Highway that starts at 405 and goes north. The, right now, the Bothell Everett Highway and Bothell Way from through the tap, through the trail area is undergoing a separate process to be widened. So I'm not too worried about that either. We will have addressed most of the minor arterials or such as 228th, 195th, Juanita, Woodinville. And we're going to be able to do that with a lot of help from federal money from the PSRC. I think that the area where we are going to be wanting is the collector system. And I'm talking roads like 190th, 191st, things like that. So I, I don't know that per lane miles, but I think that's where we're going to wind up at 2025 where our major arterials are going to be in fairly good shape and our collectors could have used some more attention.
And then of course, the local roads.
And then the local roads are, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for, for being the Grim Reaper. Somebody had to do it. And this is always very educational. And I think it's really important for residents to understand how expensive it is to maintain the roads. When we build them, that's not the end of the, of the price tag. So thanks so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Just a question, how are we now compared to before the safe streets and sidewalk levy?
Actually, what I like to say is we stopped the bleeding and we started to turn the curve. We are not terribly different than when we started the levy, but if we didn't have, but we had somewhat of a slow start getting things started. We had, we did an expensive project right off the bat. But if we remember that if we stood on the treadmill and did nothing, it would have gotten a lot worse. So our plan is to, you know, we're sort of, we've turned the curve and our plan is to improve our, gain a lot more, several more PCI points over the next several years. But right now, we're, we're pretty close to the same score where we were. But that's a lot higher than we would have been if we didn't have the levy.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I think we just hear it time in, time again, on whether it's roadways or facilities, just that maintenance is a key part to any of the infrastructure that the city owns. And just neglecting it just gets you in a downward spiral. So I thank you for coming and reinforcing that in, in just another lesson. And I appreciate that we're using, expanding our techniques that we have. So is, are some of these preservation projects done by our own city staff or is it mostly contracted out?
Well, our operations folks certainly got some more money to do some of the more traditional fixes. But when it comes to things like, I mean, that was what this levy allowed us to do is actually to hire contractors to do some of these maintenance or preservation techniques on a, on a larger scale to use, to bring in equipment and focus of labor that operations just didn't have the capability to do. So out of this program, out of my program, it's all contractors. But I certainly, you know, I'm talking to the operations people all the time to try to make sure that we are complementing each other on what we do.
Yeah, I believe there was some of the crack sealing projects where some of the contractors had some newer, more advanced equipment that, you know, was, did a more efficient job on some of the projects. And I think brought the project costs in lower than estimated.
Yeah, actually, our, the crack seal, crack sealing contractor who won the project this year had a new super duper crack sealer that had like four guns coming off of it instead of one or two. And so that allowed them to do the work in about half the time. And that was reflected in our cost and the cost that they charged us.
Great. All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, on to our next item, council committee reports. Does anyone have a report they would like to make? Deputy Mayor Zorins.
Yeah, LTAC meant today, and there's just a few, few highlights to it. We bring in about $400,000 a year average on revenue. And Danae thinks this year we'll be lucky to hit $100,000 on our, our lodging tax. And I, a, a positive note is on our website, we are putting more people of color on the website, which I always love seeing. I saw that REI is showing people of color out of doors. And I'm glad to hear that our city is also showing that as well. Hotels are running about a quarter of their occupancy, which makes sense with the revenue that we're looking at. And LTAC's reserve is independent of the general fund, but we're bracing to make some significant cuts to see us through the next couple of years. And that's, that's the sum total for LTAC.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize ahead of time, I got quite a bit. It's been a pretty busy, mental week. So I'll take my time, kind of go through quite a bit of these things that are going on in the region. So attended a SCA networking dinner. Speaker at that dinner was Bob Ferguson. A lot of the conversation was around some of the local lawsuits that are happening here and trending towards some of the national narratives out there. How to deal with public criticism as a local official, as an attorney general was part of the conversation. How are the things that are happening in Seattle affecting other cities outside of Seattle? So the more of the national narrative around the events and the chaos that's happening in Seattle, how is that transferring out to other local cities, kind of like Boffo and the East Side? And what are some of the roles of the AG? So it was very, very in-depth conversation with the Attorney General. Glad I was able to attend and hear some of the things that are affecting us regionally, how that affects us here at home. We did have three breakout groups, which was amazing to hear from other leaders around the region. On what's, what are things that you wish you knew before you became elected? What do you think you would have done differently as an elected official if you knew the pandemic was going to last as long as it did? And how are you taking care of yourself right now during this? So some pretty amazing outbreaks with other local leaders around the region. Giving us opportunities to network with each other to see how our cities are. The next committee update is the RPC Regional Policy Committee. We had a briefing from King County Evictions Prevention and Rental Assistance Program. Leo gave us an update that the program will provide over $41 million in funding from various sources to aid in eviction relief of housing instability. And King County anticipates keeping up to 10,000 households during this time housed, especially during this pandemic. We had another briefing on regional homelessness. This conversation actually turned a little, I don't want to use the word heated, but it was, it was a very interesting conversation of the, all the work that was done over the past year to on this initiative and setting up this entity and having the bylaws at the last minute try to be changed by Seattle. And so happy to know that Councilmember Debowski is strong on this and ensures that the local cities voices are being heard, all the cities as well as Seattle, but ensuring that our city of Boffo is being heard. So I was very excited to hear Councilmember Debowski step up on that. We had a briefing on the mental illness and drug dependency mid-sales tax. Obviously, there's a lot of cuts right now. One of the conversations around that was the program that we've worked so hard on and so valuable to us here in Boffo. North End area is the Navigator Program. And just, and so I used the time to speak up and say how important that is to us and to ensure that we continue to have the funding available to ensure that we can continue to have those programs and especially that Navigator Program available to us. ETP, we had an update from Metro, some of the service changes and engagement updates. A lot of the big concern right now is around lead times for Metro right now. And so one of the things that came out of today's meeting is that we're going to continue to have a joint meeting with the South End cities, the East Side cities and the North End cities to continue the collaboration to ensure that all of the network and transportation, transportation agencies are all working together as we try to connect this line. So I was encouraged by that and continued collaboration there. Then we're on to the PIC meeting. Talked about the SCA legislative priorities. Some of the other things that we talked about was the racial equity justice series. There's a lot of conversations going around regionally right now. Over the past month, there was a youth. There's a lot of conversations going around regionally right now. Um, over the past month, there was a youth action board, panel. Um, there was a, this past panel was on community support opportunity. So I encourage, uh, all of you to take the time or opportunity to, to reach out and be a part of those conversations, to listen to those conversations. They affect us not only here locally, but around our region. But there's a lot of conversations going on, a lot of work happening within our, our cities. I think we're going to hear about what we're doing here locally later in the meeting, but I'm very encouraged by the conversations, uh, listening to the youth, um, the positive messages that are being discussed and how to work together. Takwila has a very robust, uh, program, uh, teams program. So just listening to them was, was encouraging to hear all the great work that they're doing. And then I think, uh, yeah, I spoke about that housing thing. And then lastly, so the, the biggest takeaway from that committee was the common goal, understanding that your community will find ways to work with other communities regionally for positive change. Uh, and that to not stand alone, because standing alone means positive change will not happen for the community. So I, I, um, a lot of updates, a lot of great meetings, uh, available for anybody who wants further updates on these committees. Um, and I look forward to, uh, our NPSO meeting tomorrow.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a meeting of the North King County Task Force for a 24/7 homeless shelter. And they have, uh, this organization has found a site in Shoreline. There's a State of Washington Commerce grant. The county is very involved. Um, and they're actually, uh, this could be in the water as soon as early next year. The City of Shoreline needs to approve a zoning amendment for it. And as you can imagine, they're getting quite a bit of, uh, public comment about that. Um, but that's something that, um, we are a part of. That's something as part of North King County that would serve our community as well. So, um, we're keeping a close eye on that and seeing what's going to end up happening there.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I had a item. So the city manager sent out an email on Monday, I believe, about the Transportation Committee Listening Session. And we're, uh, it's looking for a volunteer to attend and be a part of that. Is there someone that has interest? Councilmember Thompson? Anyone else? All right. I'm not seeing anyone else. So Councilmember Thompson, looks like, uh, I'll submit your name and, uh, we'll get you plugged into that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, so our next item is visitor comments. Just would like to do the visitor comment and then we'll do a, a break after that, uh, since I believe we have most of the people on the phone. So we don't want to have them wait through a break. So let's see, let me read this. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 regarding Public Gatherings and Open Public Meeting, the city has accepted visitor comments in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no then, no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and as part, and are part of the record. So city clerk, I understand we have some.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Olson. Uh, we had three people submit written comments. Julie Rodwell submitted written comments regarding Lot D. Jeannie Aldark submitted a letter from Ark Boffel, which was forwarded to council. Han Tran also submitted the same letter from Ark Boffel, which was forwarded to council. And I also have five, um, members of the public on the phone that would wish, that wish to speak. I'm going to call your name in the order that we received your, um, signup. So do I have Angela? And I'm sorry if I butcher this, Maeda on the phone?
They're all muted.
Oh, sorry. Angela Maeda, are you there? I'm trying. Angela Maeda, are you on the, are you on the line? All right. Thank you. Um, you have three minutes in which to make your comments and I'm going to be timing you. So you can begin right now if you're ready. Angela, it seems like we're having, uh, issues. Could you mute your mic and maybe we'll move on while, while we move on to the next one and I'll come back to you in a minute? All right. Thank you. The, the next person is Cameron Chapman. Cameron, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Uh, I guess I should start. Uh, good evening, city council members. Uh, my name is Cameron and I've lived in this city my whole life, but this is the first time attending a city council meeting. I'm calling because you need to do more than just reaffirm your commitment and actually take action to address institutional and systemic racism. I'm calling because while I appreciate the denunciation of racial injustice and discrimination by POC residents and res, visitors need to know that they are safe, that their lives matter to our elected officials and City of Boffel staff. I implore all council members to take charge and utilize the recommendations laid forth by the letter presented to you by Anti-Racist Communities Boffel, AKA Ark Boffel, concerning the resolution considered for adoption by the city council. Thank you. Black Lives Matter. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Um, the next person I have, well, let's see if we can go back to Angela. Angela Medea, are you there? All right. I still can't hear Angela. Hannah Mendro, are you on the line?
Yes, am I unmuted?
Okay, great. Yep. You're unmuted Hannah. If you'd like to go ahead, you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, I'm Hannah Mendro. I'm a resident of Boffel and I'm also a member of Anti-Racist Communities Boffel, which is the group that sent in the letter. And I also wanted to comment about the proposed anti-racist resolution on the agenda and ask for it to be revised. I'm grateful that the city council has chosen to create a public statement affirming an anti-racist stance. I know a lot of us have asked for this and I'm very grateful to see it on the agenda. And that you plan to prioritize equity, diversity and inclusion in the city, but anti-racism is an active, ongoing commitment. And I feel that the language in the resolution could be made stronger and the commitments could also be strengthened and made more proactive. So, um, firstly, I really would like to see more transparency and accountability in the resolution. We saw that the, that a committee submitted a series of, a bunch of research and recommendations for how to make the city a more welcoming and inclusive place. And I'd really like to see the council specifically commit to implementing some of those things. And I would also really like to see the council actively solicit feedback from community members. So for instance, the creation of a racial equity council to work with the city with a series of diverse viewpoints. Um, and this resolution should also include a timeline or some other way of holding the city accountable to acting on its commitments. Uh, and that that information should be made accessible to the public. Uh, I'd also like to ask for more specific language about police brutality and, uh, police oversight within the community. For instance, a police oversight commission also made up of diverse community members, um, to continue this idea of holding the city employees accountable to the people that they serve. So broadly speaking, I would like to see more specificity, more active language, and particularly an affirmation that the lives of our black community members matter, um, and a stronger commitment to transparency and accountability. I'm grateful for the city's decision to include this resolution and to support anti-racist work. And I'm grateful for the work that went into this resolution. And I would just like to ask for more research sources, more specific language and more accountability. So thank you for the work that you've done and I really hope that you will continue to doing, to do it. Thank you for listening to me. I yield the rest of my time.
Great. Thank, thank you. Uh, the next one on the line is Sarah Gusterson. Sarah, you there?
Hi, yes. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and time starts now. You have three minutes.
Okay. After this, will you be able to check with Angela again, please?
Angela, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Hi Angela, are you there? Can you hear us?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, you can?
Want to begin? You'll have three minutes.
Okay, you can hear me now. Hello?
Hello. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, okay. Sorry. I have no idea what's going on with my phone, but, um, I live in the city of Boffel and I'm also a member of the Anti-Racist Communities of Boffel. And, um, if you were able to see me, you would be able to see that I'm Asian American. And so I am deeply grateful and relieved to the commitment of this council to pass a resolution with the intention for a safe, welcoming and equity, equitable community for all in the city of Boffel. And I applaud the prestigious work of the Dive-In Committee and the council's openness to learn. I also submit a request to delay the vote in order to adopt, um, some more actions, which our group has already submitted a letter with some specific recommendations. I wanted to use the rest of my three minutes marked as a personal appeal, um, for the council to listen to the voices of people of color, of people who are, um, minorities in our community. I think especially with the current political climate, which in my opinion is only going to get worse because of who is elected for president. Um, I fear more and more for those of us who are people of color in our neighborhoods. And I have found just in the past month, there is a lot of unfortunate ignorance of a lot of our neighbors who do not understand race issues. And, um, so I have this desperate plea for you all to listen to the voices, especially of black and brown people and people with mental health issues. With recent events in our city with Officer Shoup and Juan Renee, I think that, um, I ask you to consider that things are probably only going to escalate. And I just want to emphasize how profoundly we need you to listen to our voices and to value the different needs that we have here. Um, I urge you to please read the letter that our group has committed and submitted for your, um, consideration. Thank you. And I pass the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right. Sarah, are you ready?
Yes, am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Thanks Laura. This is Sarah Gusterson. I live in Norway Hill. I'm a member of Ark Boffel. 100 neighbors, working to make a city that welcomes all. Personally, I'm glad to see the anti-racist resolution and diversity work plan. But we need much stronger action here. This resolution denounces institutional and systemic racism. That's an important start, but it makes me, as a white person, feel too comfortable because it's easier for me to talk about the system instead of the human lives lost. So let me try to voice what brought Boffel to this point tonight. It's because of Black Lives Matter and other movements led by black indigenous and people of color, stretching back for years, standing against the murder of their community members by other people in power. That's why people of color in Boffel, especially our black residents, need to know that their lives, safety and well-being matter to the city. At the very least, we need to commit to a diversity initiative in this resolution. Please amend the resolution to do this. For the diversity work plan, heartfelt thanks to the Dive-In staff who volunteered for this, adding it to schedules already full due to furloughs and layoffs. This plan has really positive content. For example, better public outreach, reach and equity lens toolkit. We need to do this. But there's a deep concern here and it sounds like nothing about us without us. For example, this plan asks city departments radically expand their outreach and build relations with local leaders. But this plan itself has not been developed in partnership with residents outside the state, especially residents of color. What kind of model does that set for a city department? That's why we need a racial equity council made of diverse residents to work with Dive-In here. As Boffel moves forward, our actions will speak louder than words. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight is Alma Air. Alma, are you there?
Yeah, this is Alma. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Fantastic. Uh, yeah, my name is Alma Air. I am a resident of Boffel and I, I agree with all the recommendations that the anti-racist communities at Boffel have put forward in this letter and I encourage you to, to, to consider and to actually take action on, on each of these. And I wanted to make some specific comments, um, especially about the racial equity council and why it's necessary. I, if you could see me, you could see that I am, I am white and we are predom, and we are predominantly a white town. And that is, that is perfectly fine, but I want to bring up one example from our national history that is more well-known, that you may be familiar with. In the city of New York, there was a place called Seneca Village that was predom, predominantly, um, occupied by black indigenous and people of color. And they were kicked out of their homes and that's now Central Park. And this was done because, um, the people in power were white. So this is a very dramatic example. I don't think something like that could ever happen here with, um, Boffel. But it could, but every decision you make, in that case, it was eminent domain, but even, even something like pavement condition or any, any other things, all of those things can, um, could have an, uh, an adverse, could have a disproportionate effect on black indigenous and people of color. And that's why I really think that, uh, every, and, and that's why I really think this council is necessary. So anything that, that comes up can be considered from, from the people who are not in the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last of our, um, public speakers.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so I think we will take a 10-minute break and we will return at 7:40. We'll start up with the consent agenda after our break. All right, welcome back. We are on the next item, the consent agenda. Member Agnew? Looks like you're muted.
I approve, I approve that. I recommend, why don't we pass the consent agenda?
Councilmember Doer?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to, uh, move the, or approve the con- consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Doer. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, City Clerk?
Yea, yea, when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorns?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Thank you, passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, on to our next item. Uh, we have a public hearing for AB 20-117, uh, consideration of extending an interim ordinance, ordinance number 2312, temporarily suspending development application and permit timelines. So I'll now open the public hearing, and let's see, Director Kaderman? Oh, there you are. On to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm hoping my connection holds out, so I'm just going to make this a very brief presentation. This is something that, uh, the council has dealt with previously. Uh, the council adopted an interim ordinance back in April of this year when the COVID pandemic was just getting started, and there was a lot of concern and uncertainty about, uh, how this could affect the, uh, projects that we had ongoing in the city, uh, and making sure that we were able to keep the development activity going, uh, as much as possible. So there was an ordinance passed at that time, uh, it was good for six months. The public hearing was held within the 60 days as required, and that was back in June. The April 7th date took us, takes us through October 7th, basically, and at which time that will expire unless the council, um, holds an additional public hearing like this evening and votes to continue the, um, the ordinance for another six months. So what the ordinance does basically is, uh, it, uh, it extends any suspension of, uh, it, it, it extends the suspension of any expiration of permits or lapsing of applications that currently exist in our code. So this would just, uh, push that out another six months, and because it would be starting from this evening, if the council passes, it would go through March 15th of next year. And this would apply to all applications and permits as, that were filed as of January 1st of this year, which is what we did with the original ordinance as well. Uh, even though it goes on for six months, we anticipate that that will probably cover, we're hoping that will cover, um, the, this period of, of continued uncertainty about some, um, things that are happening in the economy and, uh, with COVID and everything else. Uh, if at some point the council wishes to, uh, to rescind that ordinance, it takes just a simple motion and an affirmative vote of the council at that time. So you could do that anytime before the six months is up. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Zorns?
Quick question. Over these last six months, have we had people take advantage of this? How, how is it going with? How's it been going with, in your world, with people who've got permits and things going on?
Uh, yes, we have had people taking advantage of it. It's a benefit not only to the applicants, but also to staff because then we're not having to process those extensions or renewals on their permits as well. I, I was trying to get a precise number, and it, it's difficult to track because we don't know, some may have, may not have, uh, gone in for renewal in any case, so I'm not sure if they would have taken advantage of it. But I know that we have had some that have taken advantage of that, and they're also anticipating this extension, uh, uh, to know whether or not they'd have to apply for an extension of their permit at this time. And I know, uh, on an annual basis, we often have as many as 500 or more permits that require some type of, of renewal or extension.
So on a lot of levels, this makes sense.
Uh, yes, staff recommends it this time. We, we believe it, it just makes sense to continue this for another six months.
Okay, all right, makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer?
Uh, I don't want to move too fast, but I didn't see anyone else with their card up, so I was just going to move the recommended action.
Let me ask the City Clerk if there were any comments received? All right, no comments received? Nope. Uh, I think we're ready now. Councilmember Doer?
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to approve an ordinance extending interim ordinance number 2312 to continue temporary suspension of development application and permit timelines, with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, City Clerk?
Yea, yea, when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorns?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kaderman. So on to our next item. We have AB 20-118, consideration of contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs. Uh, so I'll just turn this over to City Manager Jennifer Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, another very brief presentation. Um, I believe that you're very well informed about the services that it provided to the city and to the City Council over the last two years by Gordon Thomas Honeywell, um, the intergovernmental affairs group that we've been working with. Um, just as a reminder, um, we did, um, we made tremendous progress in the 2019 and 2020 budget years with this state. Um, we received over $3 million, um, in funds from the state to support the city and the work that we're doing, as well as the $600 million, um, the initiative that was initially led by Councilmember Doer, um, to really bring those cities together and the stakeholders for the 405, um, express toll lanes, and, um, we're able to leverage that and, and get support from the state and get an additional $600,000 for, for that project. So, um, clearly the rate of return on this contract has been phenomenal. Um, but this is truly a council policy decision. Um, we know that we have budget challenges, but it, for us from staff, it certainly is beneficial to have these services in the support of this group and, and of their representative. But I, um, leave it to council to make the decision whether you'd like to consider, continue with these, um, supportive services, lobbyist services from this group. So I turn it over to the mayor for discussion.
Councilmember Doer?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted, in the interest of transparency, I wanted to say it feels a little awkward for me to be voting on lobbyists that will probably visit me. Um, but then I, I, um, I thought about the fact that they're not just lobbying me, they're lobbying all of the legislature. And, uh, having seen them in action down in Olympia, I concur with the city manager. Um, there's nothing like having representation, uh, for your city down there, and, um, I did, uh, talk to the city attorney about whether or not I should or should not vote on this issue, and he assured me that there's no, not really conflict of interest because there's no money involved. But if anyone has concerns, um, I, I, the city man, or the city attorney, I'm sure can answer any questions. Thank you.
And if I could just jump in, um, there is money involved because it's a contract, but, uh, Councilmember Doer's vote doesn't put money into her own pocket, and that would be the issue.
Deputy Mayor Zorns?
Um, I, I see what we get from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, uh, as invaluable. Um, and I know we're looking at a very, very lean year. Uh, the state's looking at a very, very lean year, and probably it's all the more reason to have extra eyes and ears who do this job exceedingly ca- uh, capable. I'm all about saving a buck where we can save a buck, where more, you know, where, you know, many hands can, um, split up the work, but I, I
split up the work, but I, I don't know how we can do it effectively and still get the same return on the city, for the city that's comparable to the service that they give us here. So I support having them do this again for us in twenty twenty-one.
Councilmember McCullough.
Was impressed with their work through the last session. And I believe that we should strongly support their work in the future. Oh, yes. I support them.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I think this one's a no-brainer. The return that we get on our investment is just phenomenal. They've done stellar work for us for the past couple of years, and I definitely support this.
All right, I agree with everyone that has spoken so far with the work that they provide us, as well as when we go down and make our in-person visits. I think they manage our time while we're down there, get us to see the right people, make our time as effective as possible down there. So I think they're a valuable asset to the city. So I'll support, continue our relationship with them. Someone would like to make a motion? Councilmember Agnew?
Can I move the recommended action?
Councilmember McNeil.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by councilmember Agnew to authorize the city manager to execute in substantially the same form as presented, the professional services agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. State government relations services, and if approved, authorize use of fifty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty from various city funds. And we got a second from councilmember McNeil. Any discussion? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm very supportive of this, especially with today's times and budget crisis that we're going through right now. Having folks in Olympia working for us that can ensure the dollars that the Bothell citizens are spending or coming back to Bothell is critically important right now. So hats off, let's make sure that we bring those dollars back to our community so we can do more positive things here.
All right, city clerk.
Thank you. Please say, yeah, your name when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yay.
Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah.
Mayor Olson.
Yay.
Councilmember Doer.
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yay.
Thank you, passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. So on to our next AB twenty dash one one nine, second quarter twenty twenty financial report and audit and audited twenty nineteen comprehensive annual financial report. So I see Finance Director Chris Bothwell here, so take it away.
Hello, I'm going to pull up a presentation. Okay, so this is your second quarter twenty twenty financial update. The second quarter was obviously a really strange quarter, so I'm going to start with just a little bit of background. So it was pretty obvious early in the pandemic that the city's revenues were going to be affected by the pandemic. So we went in and did reforecast at all of our general fund revenues that we thought would be affected. And the result of that was a five point four million dollar deficit, operating deficit in the general fund forecasted just for twenty twenty. So it was noted at the time that we didn't have sufficient reserves in the general fund to be able to live through that, or we would have difficulty paying our bills in twenty twenty-one as a result of that. So some immediate actions were taken to shore up the financial condition of the city, including furloughs, layoffs, hiring and spending freeze, and those actions resulted in a revised deficit of approximately two million dollars. So under normal circumstances, I would be comparing the second quarter results to the budget. But in these unusual times, I'm going to compare the second quarter results to the pandemic forecast, which is what I just described. So I'm going to start with some four items that were on target or better than forecast. The first one is construction-related revenues, and specifically, this is construction sales tax and development revenues. We had forecasted those down to come in in the second quarter down by about fifty percent. The actual results were about twenty-five to thirty percent. So this was a bright spot in the second quarter. The second item is general sales tax, specifically a category called retail trade, which is a kind of a catch-all. This is where a lot of our brick and mortar retail reports and also a lot of our online sales are reported. We forecasted this down, down about ten to fifteen percent in the pandemic forecast, and it actually came in flat, so pretty consistent with two thousand nineteen collections. We think what happened there is that the losses from brick and mortar retail were were covered by additional online retail sales that gave us more sales tax. So councilmember Doer had asked a question in a previous presentation about whether or not we were keeping an eye on online sales and what that might do for retail sales tax. And my response was, we're keeping an eye on it, but we don't know how big it is. In the second quarter, I can say that it was big enough to offset losses from brick and mortar. So we don't get really great data, so I can't, I can't really forecast what that looks like going forward, but it is something we're paying attention to, and it was a bright spot in the second quarter. The third one was CARES Act funding. When the CARES Act initially came out, it looked like local governments had been specifically excluded from benefiting from that program. We thought we might pick up some recovery of costs for PPE and some other direct expenses. But since the second quarter or since the program started, the programs, basically, the interpretation of how that program works has been expanded, and it looks like we are going to benefit in a pretty significant way to defray some of our costs associated with responding to the pandemic. So that, too, is a bright spot. And then the fourth one I have is the expenditure savings that resulted from the all the things that we did in response to the early pandemic forecast. So the layoffs, the furloughs, the hiring and spending freeze, we started to see those savings materialize in the second quarter in a pretty significant way, very consistent with what we had forecasted. So that, too, is a bright spot for us. So continuing on, worse than forecasts or concerns, I've only got three items. So the first one is the real estate excise tax, and we didn't reforecast real estate excise tax. We noted it as a concern in the forecast, in the pandemic forecast. And the reasons that we didn't have a really good basis to reforecast those revenues, we kind of had to take a wait-and-see approach to that. And the second quarter was really bad for real estate excise tax. If we were to continue on that trend, we would collect at least a million dollars less in REITs than we have budgeted, and that's a million dollars in REIT one and REIT two. But I will note that real estate excise tax is very volatile and it's seasonal, so I'm optimistic that it'll bounce back. We know that transaction values are high and that everything's flying off the market. It's a problem with the inventory. So it's going to affect REITs. It's something we need to keep an eye on, and we'll do that, and we'll continue to report back to you on that. The second one is utility tax revenues, and I have this noted as a non-pandemic item. This is really a continuation of a theme that you've been hearing from other quarterly reports about changes in consumer behavior that lead to us collecting less utility tax. And specifically, it's about the cable, cable television and telephone utility taxes. As people cut the cord on cable and move away from landlines and just spend less money on telephone-type services and more on beta, we get less utility tax revenues. And that's just a, it's a trend that's continued through the second quarter of twenty twenty. I've mentioned it before, we don't know what the bottom is on this, but it's just a slow trend, downward trend that we continue to see in the second quarter of twenty twenty. And obviously, our biggest concern right now is the recovery and the uncertainty around the recovery and a possible second wave. If the economy were to get shut down again for a second wave, you know, that's something that we may have to respond to or any kind of catastrophic event in the economy right now. And so there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty, and it seems like we're just going to have to live with the uncertainty for a while. And so that's one of our biggest concerns right now. So the good news is, in the second quarter, the net result is positive. The financial position of the city has remained stable through the, through the second quarter, and we expect that to be the case through the end of the year. And we're not calling for any additional measures. We don't think any additional measures would be required to to ensure the continued financial, stable financial position of the city through the end of the year. We've reforecasted based on the second quarter data and some additional data that we've seen. And I think we're down, the newest, the latest forecast shows an operating deficit in twenty twenty of a little under a million dollars, which in normal times, we wouldn't get terribly excited about, but I think based on the circumstances right now, I think that's a really good outcome for the city, and it positions us really well to go into the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium. So we'll keep an eye on everything, but this is, this is kind of a better-than-expected report, but still not, you know, we're not out of the woods. So this is the portion of the presentation where I usually give you an economic update. I did a lot of research trying to figure out if there were some common themes out there that economists were talking about and came up a little, came up pretty empty. There's tons of chatter, and I, I think the idea that the uncertainty continues for the foreseeable future, that is kind of a theme. So what we're doing is just keeping a really close eye on everything and just being ready to act. If we see things that are alarming that we need to respond to, we're just going to, we're going to raise the flag and start talking about those things as soon as we start to see them. But I think this period of uncertainty that we're in, and I think most economies, economists would agree, is just going to be how it is for the foreseeable future. In terms of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, what we're modeling is a, just an average recession. So something that would last about eleven or twelve months, and then we would kind of start to climb out of it. That makes sense right now because of the talk of a vaccine and kind of the timeline for that. But, but really, it's just, we're doing the best we can with very, very little data and no real roadmap or recent history to tell us where this thing's going. And finally, I just wanted to make a note that the audited comprehensive annual financial report is out, it's attached, it's in your packet. We're going to post it to the website for the community tomorrow morning. We got an unqualified opinion from the state auditor on the report, which is the best possible outcome. So tons of good information in there, so if you have a chance, take a look at that. But I just really wanted to alert you to the fact that it's available. That's the two thousand nineteen report. So I'm going to unshare this. That's the end of my presentation, but as always, I'm happy to take questions.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell. So much information there. I had a few questions. So our eighteen, wait, nineteen twenty budget, part of that budget was including the sale and the revenue from Lot A. Will that, that sale be closed sometime?
So that, that's a great question. So we've already assumed that that sale is not going to close in the current biennium. So when we, when we were having conversations about the mid-biennial budget adjustment, that was one of the adjustments that we pulled out. Just because at this point, the sale of the property isn't just the nature of the properties and the extremely long due diligence processes that the, that the potential buyers have make us feel like that revenue is speculative, and so we're not including it in the budget. So when we talked about the mid-biennial budget adjustment, we adjusted that item back out as kind of one of our baseline adjustments when we went in to look and see whether or not we needed to make an adjustment for the mid-buy. So that's not assumed in any of this. So that, you know, eventually that property is going to close. We don't know what the value is going to be, and we don't know when. And so we're just considering it speculative, and when we get closer and it becomes more certain, we'll likely bring a budget adjustment or a budget amendment to the city council to talk about what that looks like from a budget perspective and what we may want to do with that money, just to fold it back in. But at this point, it's speculative, so we don't really, we don't want to include that. Same thing, same story, basically, on Lot B.
Lot D wasn't in the budget, though. I just remember very clearly, the budget really relied on Lot A sale for it to be balanced, right? Because we're required by law for it to be balanced, a balanced budget.
Yeah, so the technical definition is resources have to be sufficient to fund the budgeted expenditures, and resources includes fund balance. So you can run what's technically a year-to-year or a biennium-to-biennium operating deficit, as long as you have the resources to make up that shortfall in with fund balance. And so that's why the last budget, the nineteen twenty budget or the current budget was technically budgeted as an operating deficit. There was, you know, around a million-dollar operating deficit. That's okay because we had fund balance to shore that up.
So is that fund balance what we're going to use to, to pay, assuming this operating deficit that you just said is now a million? Or was it too many? I can't remember.
It's under a million. Yeah, it's under a million, and yeah, that's where that, that's where the funding will come from for that.
Okay, because I, I mean, I guess my, I'm, I'm wondering, do we really want to run with a deficit when we don't know what the, the next biennium budget is going to look like, and assuming it's not going to be I, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around not really dealing with that million-dollar deficit and trying to lower it.
So I, I, I respect your point, and I think it's a good point. I, it's kind of the situation that we're in. Just to be able to fund basic services and current levels of service, we have to, I mean, it's just what it takes to run the organization the way it is now without significant cuts. And in my professional opinion, I think we have enough fund balance to be able to carry a small, I mean, just to give it some perspective, we're talking about a general fund budget that's a hundred and ten million dollars. So one, you know, a million-dollar deficit is really, you know, we're talking about less than one percent of our operating budget that we're going to use fund balance to possibly shore up. And we always hope that we're going to do better than that, right? We hope that we're going to implement, I mean, I mean, I think everybody in the organization is keeping their eye on the ball when it comes to saving money through the end of the year. And of course, into the next biennium, because I think people understand the situation that we're in financially. And so I'm hopeful that we're not going to chip away at our fund balance any more than, than absolutely necessary, and I think that less than a million is probably a pretty realistic prediction of how we're going to end the year. But in my opinion, I don't think it's irresponsible to, to, to go a million dollars into the red this year, and one of the reasons I say that is because we do have Lot D out there that we won't be including. And the reason I mention that is because it's in the, it is probably going to close in the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium, but you won't see it included in that budget. So it's going to be just like Lot A in that sense, is that we'll have a conversation about how it's speculative, and when it does get closer to closing, we'll bring a budget amendment to you. The proceeds of that, of Lot D are kind of our strategy to shore up the general fund ending fund balance or our fund balance issues. And in my opinion, it's not irresponsible for us to close this year, a year with a pandemic, significant disruptions to revenue, to, to go into that, to, to, to close the year with a million-dollar deficit, doesn't feel irresponsible to me at all. And it's just my professional opinion, but.
I just needed to ask that question because we, we talk so frequently about the structural deficit and how we need to, to deal with it, and so I guess I've just kind of needed to understand why we would knowingly go into deficit if there's
I think that's a really great point. If you don't mind, I'd just like to add that, that the structural deficit is a real thing, and we're really dealing with that. The structural deficit isn't, when we have a significant revenue disruption that comes from a global pandemic, that is separate from our structural deficit issues. And I actually think that the structural deficit issues are, we're working on those, but that's even any, any government that is, that is financially stable and has done all the sustainability work that they should be doing to really think like long-term into the future about their finances. When a global pandemic comes along, they're going to dip into fund balance, and I think that's kind of why I have this a little bit more comfort with it than, than we might otherwise have about an operating deficit. So I absolutely respect your point. I think it's a, it's a smart, it's a, it's a really smart comment. But I think that just the nature of the global pandemic makes me a little bit more comfortable with the situation that we're in this year.
Okay, thanks. And then my last question is kind of weedy, but I was curious, do we have, I mean, there obviously have been significant impact on our restaurant and hotel industries within Bothell? And so that wasn't in any of the categories unless it was retail? So I'm just wondering if you could comment to that, and if we can actually track that sort of thing, know what the differences are.
Yeah, yeah, great point. That does show up as a separate industry. It's significantly smaller than construction, so I didn't, or retail trade, those are our two biggest, so I didn't include it. It's relatively small. But it is, and it, but the, the impacts to those businesses, particularly to the hospitality where the hotels are, are in there, was significant. We forecasted it down between fifty and seventy-five percent down compared to last year through the quarter, just based on the specific month where we thought they'd be closed. And the results are coming in right in line with that.
Do we, I guess what I'm getting at is, I wonder if we have numbers that would indicate how much of a difference the, the fact that we closed Main Street and opened up parking areas for restaurants to have, you know, put their businesses in, if there was any way to kind of measure what the impact of those measures were, or, you know, those, those things tried to do to help keep the restaurants going in Bothell.
Yeah.
Judge that?
I think that we could probably get to I think that, that we, we could probably get to data where we could show what, so we could pull, there's enough restaurant, there's enough hospitality, kind of food and beverage restaurants on Main Street that we could put them together, pull their data, their sales tax data specific to them, put it all together and then compare that to the results that they had in the same periods last year. So we could tell what their decline was. The difficult, the data point we don't have is what would it have been had we not opened Main Street? And, and we just, we don't know. Um, and I don't know that, I don't know that we can get to that data. But, but there could be some analysis. If the council's interested in it, you know, we could definitely come up with some analysis.
I think it would be helpful just for future decision-making. And it's not just Main Street, right? I mean, there's the cottage, um, using part of their parking lot and, and so it would, I just think it would be helpful. Say for whatever reason, no vaccine and, and the same as the summer, is it worthwhile to look at that again? Uh, that's all it's kind of getting at, to have the derivative making.
Yeah, Nick, I, I think that's a great idea. I'll huddle the team and we'll see if we can figure out what kind of data points we might be able to put together that would support that. Uh, how, how that, how well that worked or, uh, that answer that question for you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. A great presentation. And, um, hey, you know, a little bit of good news is, is big these days.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
It's very well done.
Thank you.
Ask, um, so what do we have in reserve?
Uh, the general fund reserve is, uh, a little under ten million dollars, between nine and ten million dollars.
So if we had to go into that, I know how much we want to protect that, but because of this downturn in the economy and our deficit as well, we may have to look at that originally at one point, right?
Yeah, I think that's right. Um, so the, the standard, the, the number that we need to keep to make sure that we don't run into problems paying our bills is about a sixty day reserve. Sixty days on, this year we're forecasting about fifty million dollars in general fund revenue. Um, so sixty days is gonna be about eight million dollars. So as long as we stay above eight million dollars, we're, we're, we're not gonna be in a situation where we have trouble paying our bills.
And that's what I really want to, um, uh, anticipate because we don't know where we're going. Unfortunately, this, um, uh, the fire burning again has, uh, shower businesses down again. So we're not out of the woods yet. But I appreciate knowing where our reserve is and what, what the cautions are about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Uh, well, fir- first I want to thank you for this terrific report because it was my weekend entertainment while we were under house arrest with the, uh, fires going on. And I was struck with, for reading that could be really terribly confusing and tedious. Whoever put this together did a stellar job. So, so they made my weekend easier. So my thank, thanks for that. Um, and then yesterday, uh, our city manager answered a lot of my questions. He answered some of my questions in the presentation. So I really don't have any other que- questions except a little one. But I do want to echo what, uh, Councilmember Dewar was saying about getting more information, get a clearer picture on what the impacts are with Main Street would be really helpful. So, um, little added pressure on that. The other thing is that I noticed that we have, and this is not the place to discuss it, but I did notice that in our park impact fees, we've got like three some odd million dollars sitting there. So I'm looking forward to when the time comes for council to talk about if we can spend that, where we might be able to spend that for parts. I just wanted to keep the comment that I saw it there and I was glad to see it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll make sure that feedback gets back to the team. They work really hard on getting, making that report, uh, something that's easy to digest for the community and, and really puts a lot of information out there. So I appreciate the feedback. I'll make sure it gets back to those guys.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Bothwell, just a question. Um, I noticed in there, you mentioned at one point, and I can't exactly find it, that, um, we have moved toward using one-time revenues for one-time expenses and away from moving those kind of one-time windfalls when we sell a piece of property over, like, just for operating expenses. Um, is that like a general, like, moving forward? That's the way it's going to be? Or is that just sort of a right now thing?
No, that's not the way it's gonna be going forward. Um, it's actually in our poli- it's in our policies, our, the, uh, comprehensive financial management policies that, that were adopted by council, uh, not that long ago. It's in there that we'll use one-time revenues for one-time expenditures. It's a best practice to do it that way. Um, it's been, because of our financial situation, we've got some, we've got some needs, like just restoring the fund balance. Uh, we've got some needs in the replacement fund, uh, stuff like that, that we need to throw some money at. Those, in most cases, they're still one-time expend, there's still one-time, uh, items. But we're not gonna be using one-time revenues to fund ongoing operations. Um, it's, I mean, I, 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 the comment tells me, you know, that's probably not a best practice.
All right. Well, I know that we, I know that, well, I won't say that. But, um, yes, I am, I'm excited to hear that.
Councilmember Dewar?
Nevermind. I, I answered my question.
All right, Director Bothwell, thank you very much for that presentation. As Deputy Mayor Zorn said, the presentation or the packaging was excellent. Uh, I think it just continues to improve and, and it is easily digestible. There's a lot of information in there, but it, it doesn't seem daunting or it reads and presents very well. So I, I appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you all.
All right, on to our next, uh, agenda item, A B twenty dash one two zero. Uh, receive a report on diversity, equity and inclusion research. Consider providing direction to the city manager and consider approval of the resolution reaffirming its commitment to be a safe, welcoming, equitable community for all and denouncing hatred and intolerance and discrimination. So I believe I'll turn it over to city manager to start it off.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm happy to introduce Christian Stark. He's the executive intern that was brought on this summer to work on this initiative. And then we have two members of the diversity committee with us, Amy Ross and Carly. See, her name is like my father's. And so I always want to pronounce it the way he pronounces it. Yur- Yurger, Yurger, is that right? Jorger, Jorger.
Charker.
Jorger. Um, and they're here to, um, also present with Christian. They worked, um, heavily on this report with a couple of other folks in the city, and we really appreciate the work that they've done. This was a multi-month project and work that some, had already begun with the diversity committee. And Christian was able to come in and, and really, um, put some energy and some, um, true full-time effort behind it. So I'm very pleased that he was able to come and join us this summer and is able to present with his colleagues, present this report to the city council. So, um, Christian, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you for the introduction, Jennifer. I'll go ahead and share my screen and we'll get started.
Okay.
Thank you as well, Jennifer, for the introduction and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Um, we're here to share our research findings and present recommendation for creating a City of Bothell Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative. You'll hear us refer to diversity, equity and inclusion as DEI throughout the presentation. And, um, we thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. Next slide please. To share a bit of background with you, the Dive In Committee was created with council support in two thousand eighteen as an internal staff-led group focusing on DEI. Um, by then, early work was spent on really the business of being a committee and introducing ourselves to city staff. We began with highlighting, um, diverse topics and holidays and milestones through newsletters and posters, um, engaging with city staff by hosting luncheon learns. We collaborated with other staff on city-sponsored functions. Uh, council furthered support in two thousand nineteen by adding a diversity goal to the council scorecard and by allocating funding to the Dive In Committee. We, um, came together in December of two thousand nineteen for our first committee retreat to reflect on our past work for the last two years and to think critically about the direction of the committee going forward. Um, we wound up at the retreat reworking our mission, vision and objectives and put a heavy, heavy focus on listening and learning from other DEI initiatives, um, which is what our work in two thousand twenty and especially with the addition of Christian has primarily consisted of. So we're gonna share with you the details of our research process, which included identifying the demographics of both our city and our staff. Research on the other work cities and counties in the region are doing toward advancing DEI within their workforce and their communities and soliciting feedback from City of Bothell through an all-staff online survey, survey and, um, an employee focus group. Next slide please. First, we have our demographics analysis. And while we all know that Bothell has grown and is growing, um, Bothell is also diversifying just as dramatically. And in order for us to establish direct engagement with our community, we need to know who our community is. Next slide please. And so here we have, um, population data taken from residential numbers in nineteen ninety and compared to two thousand eighteen. Um, as you can see, Bothell's population has grown to nearly six times what it was in nineteen ninety. Um, and it's diversified in a number of factors, including a little over thirty-two percent of the population now identifying as people of color, which is about four and a half times what it was in nineteen ninety. And to highlight some of the, the breakdowns here, the largest, um, percentage identifying as people of color identify as Asian at fourteen point nine percent, which is about seven thousand residents. And the largest of that group, um, identify as Asian Indian. The second largest group we have identify as Hispanic or Latino at nine percent, which is a little over four thousand residents, of which nearly seventy-four percent identify as Mexican. Next slide please. Uh, we also have had a significant increase in the percentage of residents born outside of the United States. And here we're comparing residential data from the year two thousand to the numbers in two thousand eighteen. In the year two thousand, about thirty-three hundred residents identified as foreign-born. And that number has increased more than two and a half times to an estimated total of eight thousand eight hundred nineteen in less than twenty years. Uh, we also learned an estimated twenty-four percent of all residents speak a language other than English. And of that, about seven percent or over thirty-two hundred people indicate they have limited English proficiency, which is something we saw come up a lot in our research, that consideration of language services for LEP residents. And so of those thirty-two hundred limited English proficiency residents, uh, nearly forty percent are Asian or Pacific Islander and thirty-four percent speak Spanish. We also learned that, um, the North Shore School District reports for their twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year that almost half, at forty-three point nine percent of their students are students of color. And their students speak ninety-four different languages, with some of the top languages being Chinese, Spanish, Korean and Russian. Next slide please. And, uh, finally, we have the demographics for our own staff. And these figures help to show who we are as an organization. And so as of today, fifty-one of the three hundred fifty City of Bothell employees identify as people of color, which works out to fourteen point six percent of staff. And compared to the thirty-two percent of community members who identify of, as people of color, um, we have a little ways to go to achieve parity with our community. And again, we, we wanted to gain a better understanding of how reflective city staff is of our community. And we need the city demographics so that we can be sure that we're serving the needs of all of our residents and that we're able to address the barriers members of our community may be facing. And I'll turn it over to Christian and Carly to discuss our research results.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, before I start talking about the second portion of our research process, uh, we wanted to take a minute to acknowledge who we are here today as presenters. Um, this report and this research process was led by a subgroup within our full diving committee here at Bothell, made up of seven city staff members. Uh, we feel it's important to acknowledge that all seven of us are individuals who identify as white and that we don't represent the demographics of the city that we seek to serve. Um, with that said, we want to make it clear that we are not hoping to be any kind of voice of authority for all members of our community with this report. And rather, we wanted to focus on really, uh, showing, uh, the depth of diversity here in Bothell and then also start to identify some of the ways that we can better, uh, engage historically marginalized and underrepresented residents here. Uh, with that said, I'll hop into the second portion of our, uh, research results that, uh, Amy entered at the beginning. And that's, uh, looking at other local DEI initiatives. Um, so our research question was pretty simple. It was, what are other cities and counties in the region doing to advance a commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion that we can do here in Bothell? Uh, to do that, we looked at four different places and they're all listed here, but I'll go through them. Um, first was, we looked at King County and their Equity and Social Justice Initiative. We looked at the City of Shoreline and their Diversity and Inclusion Initiative. We looked at the City of Renton and their Inclusion Initiative. And then we looked at the City of Bellevue and their Diversity Advantage Initiative. These are all places that have, uh, pretty well-established diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, but they represent a good range between larger, more established, highly-funded programs like at King County to some, uh, like the one at Shoreline. It's a lot more similar to us in terms of population size, staff resources and time committed to this work thus far. We learned quite a bit from this process and you can see a lot of that in our report, but we'll go over some key takeaways here that we saw as commonalities between all four initiatives and that we think are really core parts of a sustainable and comprehensive DEI initiative. The first one we wanted to call out here on its own, on its own slide, and that was the importance of council direction, either city or council, or city or county council direction. Um, all of the initiatives that we looked at had, uh, leadership from the council to really set priorities and make a DEI, uh, a priority for the organization as a whole. In King County, their county council passed an Equity and Social Justice ordinance, which, uh, set equity and justice, uh, standards in their King County strategic plan. At Shoreline, they, their, uh, city council created a council goal focused on diversity and inclusion. At Renton, uh, they added a inclusion goal into their city business plan and they used that business plan to set priorities for all departments in the organization and also, uh, create metrics to measure success of, of their organization as a whole. And then at Bellevue, they also, uh, created a, uh, council goal specifically focused on cultural competence, really to serve as a backbone for their work and their commitment to DEI. So our real big takeaway was council has a strong role to play in setting DEI as a priority for the organization as a whole and that, uh, kind of work beyond that can trickle down from there. I'll go over now our other four main takeaways. They're all listed here. Uh, the second was, all the initiatives that we looked at had real inclusive intentional community engagement programs that really drove their equity work. Um, especially in Bellevue and in Renton, so much of the programs that came out of their DEI initiative uh, were rooted in the work that they did to really make their community engagement program systematic and intentional and inclusive. Uh, and really start to engage the voices of cultural leaders in the, uh, community and engage the voices of diverse, uh, leaders in the community. Uh, the next one was kind of pretty standard. Uh, all the initiatives that we looked at had comprehensive staff training uh, on topics of diversity, equity and inclusion. And, and all four of the issues that we looked like, and that, or that we looked at had, uh, core curriculums that all members of the organization had to, to go through in terms of training, to really get their staffs on the same page in terms of these topics and start to dive in kind of into what role that we have as local government officials in, in furthering this work. The next one was, we saw as another commonality, an effort to move towards department accountability for DEI work throughout each organization and move towards what you may have heard of referred to and what we saw a lot refer to as equity lens, the use of an equity lens in decision-making. And really, that's kind of trying to move past the idea that it's the role of a DEI coordinator or an HR director to do all DEI work in an organization, and move more towards an idea that everyone in the organization, all departments in the organization, have a unique role to play in furthering equity in our community, and that we should think about that as we make decisions and policy as a city. And then finally, pretty straightforward, all the initiatives that we looked at were backed by staff resources. They all had somebody of the organization in some way, either half-time employee, full-time employee, that was dedicated to the work over time to make their programs, again, comprehensive and sustainable.
Thanks for that overview, Christian. I'll take it from here. Christian's key takeaways were really illuminating for us as a group. We also know that our own staff have a lot of experience to offer on this topic, so we wanted to see how those takeaways landed with them. So we engaged our own city staff in two different ways. We sent out a staff survey to which we got a forty-one percent response rate. And then we also held a focus group with six staff who do a lot of community outreach and engagement as part of their work. So I'll share our takeaways from those two sessions now. And the first is the staff survey. So first, I'll say that the majority of our respondents feel that the City of Bothell has a very welcoming culture as staff. An example of that is around eighty-five percent of our staff said that they feel respected by other employees at the city. So that's a great bright spot for us to build off of. And at the same time, our committee is interested in teasing out a little bit further, what's working well for that eighty-five percent, and then, you know, what's not working so great for that fifteen percent? So how can we continue to improve our employee experience? Second, we asked staff to tell us in their own words what it means to serve the community through an equity and inclusion lens. And the majority of the responses referenced that we need to know who our community is in order to serve all of them. And then, once we have that shared understanding of our demographic groups and cultural leaders, to then better engage those underserved community groups in city decision-making. So overall, we were really pleased to see that at least staff who responded to our survey are interested in doing more inclusive community engagement. Our second engagement effort was with staff who do community outreach. So we've got two categories of takeaways to share with y'all here. The first is some more process-oriented insights from this group. And the first was, again, this call for an agency-wide understanding of our demographics and who our community is. So that sounded a little different from this group. It was more in the vein that I do all this community outreach as part of my work, yet I know that there are pockets of our community I do not reach, and who are those groups? And then, how can I do that better? So that leads into this second point here, that this group agreed that they would all benefit from a shared framework and tools to do that inclusive engagement in a more effective and sustainable way. And then the last point is, this group was really, I was really impressed. They were able to name barriers that exist to city services already. So they took a really expansive view of equity and inclusion and talked about socioeconomic status, mental health, disability and ability, as well as our limited English proficiency program. So really talked a lot about how we can improve, how we deliver services to those who either don't speak English or don't speak English well. And then the second category here is a bit more philosophical. This group of staff all agreed that our community is quite supportive of one another, and they are able to identify groups that have formed out of support for one another, which brought up this question, if we know that's happening in our community, why don't staff reach out? So the second is that staff, especially this group, has a lot of energy and ideas and know-how, but they're asking for, what's our strategic direction here? Where are we going as an agency? And how do we align all this work across our organization so that it's not just on one department or perhaps a few staff who do outreach already? So between researching our other initiatives in the region, doing our demographic analysis, and then engaging with our own staff, we came up with the recommendations that Amy will lead us to now.
Thank you, Carly. We arrive at the recommendations portion of our report. And as you've heard, our research has shown many other city governments have established a formal DEI initiative that really starts with a prioritization from city council and city leadership. And in fact, all of the DEI initiatives we researched were guided by direction from the decision-making body. As Carly said, we also heard the importance of this type of commitment from interviews conducted with staff from other cities and as well as feedback from City of Bothell employees. Next slide please. And so first, we recommend the city council create a new council goal reflecting the city's commitment to advancing diversity in the workplace, equity in the outcomes of city policy and decision-making, and inclusion in city engagement with and accessibility for all members of the community. Once council sets the goal to guide the organization, staff would then create a work plan with strategic objectives to help guide department programs while also offering a means to measure progress along the way and focusing on intentional and inclusive community engagement, comprehensive staff training, and department accountability. I'll turn it back over to Christian and Carly to dive into what building a work plan could look like.
Thank you, Amy. And our intention here is not to ask the council to look at specific options for what would make up a diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative here today, but we really want to answer the question of, you know, if council decides they want to make this a goal, and if we want to start an initiative here in Bothell, what would that look like? What are some of the pieces that would make that up in the long run that we could kind of look forward to as we start on this work? We chose to use a building block analogy for a couple of different reasons. One was to stress that there are stages of this work in order to make it, again, comprehensive and sustainable. We have to move through some of the things that we'll talk about in the first building block to get to some of the things that we kind of are calling full implementation here in the third building block. So that's a time component, but then also, the second piece is, there's a resource component there. We start at what we're calling enhanced status quo, which is kind of what we could start to do with our staff now, and then move towards what we could do if we had a staff member dedicated to this work over the long term. Go through now what are in each of these blocks. And I'll start with this first one. This is the first building block. This is kind of our enhanced status quo, what we could start to do with our current staffing. Do want to stress here that right now, our diving committee is made up of individuals who do this work on the side in their full-time positions. And even though we say current staffing, we also mean that it would take more effort from those who are involved in the committee now to do some of these things. And especially now in a time when the city is leaner than it usually is. This is, you know, a big ask still, even if it's current staffing. Some of the things included on here include really strengthening and redefining the role of the diving committee, moving from something, a group that does a lot of great staff education now, but to a group that does more, taking kind of overall goals for DEI from the organization and transferring them into what we, in our different departments, can do to start to do some of this work and make this a priority again in all departments, like we've talked about throughout this presentation. Some other things on this list are, we can publish a demographics report using the information that's presented in the appendix, the first appendix of the report that we did here, and start to spread some awareness of these demographics around the organization in ways that Carly mentioned in her previous section. We could start to analyze city staff and boards and commissions demographics and understand where there's gaps between those demographics and the demographics of our community as a whole. And then we can continue with the current communications program we have now with a really limited focus on community engagement and limited English proficiency outreach. I want to stress that you probably have noticed that our research process didn't include getting community input on these recommendations, and that's because we don't really have a structured way to do that in an inclusive and intentional way. And getting to that point kind of requires some foundational work that we'll talk about in the second and third building block here. Our second building block is what we're kind of calling foundational work or research and development. You'll notice that we've labeled this as something that could be done if we had a part-time employee dedicated to this work. Some of the things under this second building block could include starting to clarify a vision and a scope and a purpose for, again, an inclusive community engagement program, starting to develop a curriculum for Community Engagement 101 for city staff or DEI training. We could start to create our own version of an equity lens toolkit here in Bothell, similar to what they've done at Renton or at Bellevue, number one that works for our staff and is kind of really embedded in Bothell specifically. And we could start to do some of that outreach to really identify key cultural leaders and stakeholders, so we can start to make relationships with representatives of diverse members of our community, so we can start to, again, start to get their voices heard more in our decision-making and in our processes here at the city. And then finally, we could start to address some compliance issues related to limited English proficiency. We also have two sections here, our two pieces here at the bottom with dollar signs next to them, and those are just some tools that can support that community engagement program. That would be aside from any staff resources. I'll hand it back over to Carly now to go over the third block.
All right, so building on the first two blocks, our third block is really where we start to see a full implementation of an inclusive engagement strategy. So this has obviously a time component as relationships in the community. Building those relationships takes time. But we're also, we also believe this work could be advanced with an additional full-time employee. So just to give you a flavor of what activities we could do with the additional resources, one example is to develop and offer a City Hall 101. So this is a common program in a lot of local governments, basically to, it's a course for residents on how to access all of the city services that we provide. So that's an option to build some inroads into some groups that perhaps feel underserved. The second is, this person could create a structure for any ad hoc community committees. So this would be beneficial for the council when certain issues pop up in the community that you would like to hear community input on in a very structured way, yet perhaps doesn't warrant a very long-term board or commission. And second, this person could support our departments in examining which city services could benefit from doing some specific demographic group engagement and then supporting those departments in doing that engagement. And they could also implement the training that was developed in our research and development building block number two. So that looks like providing your engagement 101 training and the DEI core curriculum training. As we saw, that is a really key point in a lot of our research. And that training is important to provide tailored to different work groups within the organization. So that could look like a specific training for city council and commissioners, a specific training for executive leadership team, managers, and then the rest of staff. This person could also support our departments in implementing their own DEI work plans, so identifying goals and objectives, setting key performance measures, and collecting data, analyzing that data so that we can continuously improve at how we're providing equity in our service delivery. And then lastly, this person could support revamping our boards and commissions philosophy at the city. So having boards and commissions is a, it is a big piece of community engagement. So similar to how we examine staff demographics and our community demographics, you know, we could examine the demographics of our commissions, boards and commissions, to see how reflective they are of our community. So our hope here is just to give you some ideas of what a DEI initiative and inclusive engagement strategy could look like at the city. So hopefully, just something for you to wrap your arms around when you're making your decision. So that concludes the bulk of our presentation and brings us to our staff recommendations. So we have two for the council tonight. The first is to provide direction to the city manager to bring a few things back to council. The first is the process to adopt a citywide DEI goal. And then the second is for the city manager to bring back some more plan options for the council to consider as part of the 2122 budget deliberations. And then the second recommendation is to consider approval of the resolution that is in your agenda packet, affirming council commitment to be a self-safe, welcoming, and equitable community for all. So we gave you just a lot of information just now. So we're really happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for the presentation. It was enlightening. A couple of things. If we were to implement these goals, how long would it take for this program to be up and running? Anybody?
This would be a multi-multi-year program. When you look at some of the cities that the Dive-In Committee looked at, some of these initiatives started in the late 2000s. And so we're looking more in 2020 now, so they've been in place for over a decade. This just takes time, so it would be years.
Okay. And nothing derogatory about the committee, but I'd prefer some participants of color to be on that if we want to actually represent our city.
There actually are on the committee itself. The individuals that stepped up to volunteer additional time are not people of color, but we absolutely have members of people of color on the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. So I really am impressed with what the committee has been doing and the goals that you have in place. And especially when I look at the plan for, you know, building blocks one, two, and three. But let me try and go back here for a second. The thing I lack as a council member is listening to the cultural leaders. So I'm sure that when I make these decisions, I'm doing what is important to the people in our community. So I can go ahead and say, I am very impressed with building block two, but I really want to hear from the people in our community first before I make those decisions. That would be my first goal. My second goal would be to say, let's look at all of our budget issues and decide how best can we put someone here in charge of this very important committee? This is critical for our citizens of Bothell. We can see by your data that we have people who are underrepresented, and they need to be heard. So I want to know how we can spread out the dollars so we have staff people who can do this. And I think the last thing I would say is, I need to have the community involved. And I want to hear their voice. So when we move forward, we know we're doing what the community is asking us to do. So let's engage them. So I can make a lot of decisions, but these are the things I need really much to make those decisions. Thank you. And your presentation was excellent.
So I think if we focus on what really the city manager is looking for tonight, I think, you know, the direction that they're looking for is a formal, whether or not for the city manager to come back whether or not for the city manager to come back with formal direction. Hold on one second. We're having lighting, technical issues. All right, that there be like. So I think really the, what we're trying to get at is if we're looking for a, a council goal and also whether, what options to consider as part of the budgeting process that will get developed in the proposal that the city manager is going to come back with us next month. So I don't think we're really getting down into the, the nitty gritty of the details, but I think we're looking for direction on whether we want staff to begin this process, begin this journey. As you know, the city manager said, this is a multi year process. And whether or not we want to, first of all, adopt a, a city council goal of a D, DEI goal. And then also whether we want to have it included in our twenty one, twenty two budget. City manager, am I grasping that? Because I don't want us to go too far off course as we're having these discussion points. Because I think we're, we want to have a fairly narrow discussion on this topic at this time to really start the, the ball rolling on this.
And I, and I appreciate the clarification and, and just to clarify more, the budget presentation is October sixth. So to manage your expectations, what I would come with as part of the October sixth presentation is then that question of do you want to include additional expenses towards a DEI initiative? I won't have any kind of work plan there. Nothing will occur from that standpoint. I, I won't be presenting a work plan. There, there's no way to, to do that by October sixth. So it's really, the question on October sixth will, will be, do you want to include, you know, whether it's monies for training or some resources or, you know, a software package or a staff member? That will be the question at the October sixth council meeting. When I present the budget, you'll see where you are financially and whether you want to add something like that into the twenty one, twenty two budget. And then work would begin on developing a work plan in twenty one and twenty two. There is no capacity in twenty twenty. We're almost done with twenty twenty. We have to finish the budget. And we're still working on COVID and a variety of other major initiatives and completing our work from your goals in, in two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty. So then that would become part of the work plan for twenty one, twenty two. And as we have before, if you decide that this is a council goal, staff would then put strategic objectives together on how we would start the work towards achieving your goal. As we have, you know, for the past four years, we then bring that to you in the spring timeframe and say, okay, this is your scorecard. Here are your goals. And here are the strategic objectives we're going to work on so that you can see those. And then that's how we track our progress. So we come back to you on a quarterly basis with the scorecard and we show you all the work that we're doing on your strategic objectives that are leading towards accomplishing your goals. So that would be the process.
Thank you for the clarification, city manager. I just didn't want us to get far, too far off track on our discussion because there is an immense amount of detail and information that was provided. And we can definitely just, you know, have discussion for many nights on, on what direction to go. But I think we have just these preliminary direction and just the, the development of the goal initially before we even start down that path.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, mayor. Just to start off in terms of overall direction, I am completely in support of a DEI initiative and absolutely think it should begin with a council vote. I realize that we have budget problems going into next year all too well. But we also have racial equity problems and I think that we should make this a priority in spite of our budget challenges. The one thing that I would really like to make sure is that anything that we do has the active involvement of the black and brown people who already call Bothell home. And not just in a sense of outreach to them, but in a sense of being involved in the development of this initiative. You know, we heard from quite a few advocates in Bothell tonight with suggestions. And, and I think it's important that we let them know that, that we heard them. You know, we heard them talk about a racial equity commission. And quite frankly, if we decide to pursue a staff position, I, I would like that staff position to be the liaison for that commission. And if possible, I would like that commission to have a voice in to everything that we do at the city. I, I just like, I, I don't want to see that we do a diversity and inclusion program that pigeonholes diversity as like this siloed issue. And it ignores the way that cities have made rules specifically to exclude and marginalize black and brown people historically. So from a staff point of view, our staff should reflect our city and it doesn't. And if we aren't getting applicants that are representing our community, I think we should really start to think about why. Because they live here. And if we have job openings and we aren't getting applicants, why not? And I, I think, starting with this goal and doing an initiative, I think we'll do a lot. And, and especially listening to the people that we already have that live here that tell us what they think. I think we'll make them feel more welcome. And I think if we do that, then we will probably get more involvement than we have in the past. So I'm very interested in continuing to have this conversation, not only with this body, but also with our community. And just, yes, we need to make this priority.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Um, a, a few things. This summer at AWC, the, on an equity panel, the Tacoma mayor, Mayor Woodard's made a comment that has just stuck with me all summer. And her comment was, she doesn't like the term reform, that she prefers the, the, when we talk about our city government, it's not reforming it, but transforming it. And it wasn't from a Marxist perspective. It was going, going deeper than that. And I, and I thought it was quite profound to think about transforming ourselves, not reforming ourselves, but transforming ourselves. I, you guys know I have a heart for the invisible and it's been breaking my heart that we haven't, we talk about BIPOC, but we're not, we're not also including the very poor. And we have some big pockets of that here in Bothell who are very, very invisible. And as a city, they're not a very greasy wheel and they don't get a lot of attention. And so anytime we talk about the underserved, I, I hope that we're more purposeful in thinking about them. The city manager, and I'm cheated on this because I don't have it memorized. She established city goals of ethics, service, safety, innovation and teamwork. And DEI is already embedded in the, in the, in the properties of her goals. There are priorities of fairness and humility, emotional and physical safety, creativity and leadership and collaborating and supporting. And which is going to lead me to my next point is that staff and city council, we're all on boards and committees that have regular DEI applications in, with their department. And the city manager, she, she's monitoring and setting hiring standards. And so when I look at what we're already doing and we're doing well and we're on the right track with and, and, and resources that we have readily available for ourselves. And we have an exceedingly tight, tight budget and we've taken some hard hits this year. That adding another employee doesn't seem like a fair thing to the people of Bothell. Our parks department is woefully hurting and they formed a huge, huge tool in bringing the community together. They can create opportunities where communities can come together and celebrate different populations. And so I don't want to talk about adding more people to the payroll until, until we get back to where we were. Where we've got a healthy parks department, where our other departments are healthy. I mean, we have, I learned about some cuts that we've got going on in our, in our city staff that, and I'm sure that we will hear about it later. We have some people who are really hobbling along here. We need to bolster the city up and make sure that it's strong again. So while there may be a place to hire someone part time or full time, it's not in twenty twenty one. So put that on the back burner. That's where, that's the perspective that I'm coming from. We've got tools, we can get tools, we're, we're in a community, small and large, that gives us those tools. Pass a resolution, get our perspective going. But as far as putting budget towards this, in addition to what we've already got going on, I can't support that in the immediate future. And that's where I land.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, mayor. I'm trying really hard to reconcile what I think was an excellent presentation about how to more equitably serve the Bothell community. And, you know, have, have a staff that better represents what our community looks like. I mean, the, the forty three point nine percent of NSD students identifying as minority or people of color is staggering. It's just completely staggering. And we have a long way to go. I mean, none of our city leadership, I mean, in terms of the ELT executive leadership group is, you know, representative of that. So I'm trying to reconcile what I think is an excellent presentation and plan for equitable service and diversifying our boards and commissions with what the visitor comments were, which to me really is more about attacking systemic racism. And so I'm really struggling, and maybe that's why the mayor made his comment about really narrowly focusing. But I mean, they're, they are interrelated in a way, right? And one of my process questions that maybe someone could answer is they, they commented on the resolution. And typically, I've never had resolutions commented on, I've never experienced this ahead of time and ask for changes because typically all of council is not involved in writing a resolution. And so I don't even know how to deal with that request by some of the visitor, visitor comments that, that we got. But clearly there's this, there's this real desire and need for community engagement. So I, I mean, I guess the things that I do know and that I can say are that absolutely it should be a goal. But I think we need to really think about what the goal is. Is it just this little silo of city services or is it really bigger than that? And, and looking at ourselves and how, how the city and the, and the institution maybe plays a role in, in, in keeping systemic racism in place. I, I don't think that's really been touched on in a meaningful way in this presentation. And maybe it should be, it seems like that's what the community is asking for. And so I guess I would ask that as we look at a goal and, and think about defining that goal, what do we really want? What are we really asking for? I think, and this is no knock on what staff did. I so appreciate the commitment and the, really the volunteer hours that have gone into this. And this in no way is demeaning that because it's, it's really important work too. I guess I'm just trying to reconcile, how do we move forward with that? And also address the real concerns about people in our community who don't feel safe and who, who feel that we need to address a, a bigger problem. And maybe those are separate discussions. I just, I think we really need to kind of attack that and be thoughtful about the goal. And then as far as, it seems really, really clear to me that we need community engagement. It came up in the staff presentation. And I just think we, we can't meet the community's needs if we don't know what they're wanting, what they're asking for and, and, and really getting that feedback. And so I agree with council member Thompson, whatever we do, we need to have, that's such a critical piece. And, you know, I, I have tried to reach out to, to different diverse communities and tried to engage them on boards and commissions. And it's, it's tough. It's, it's not easy. But it's so critical because if, if we don't have representation, then again, we don't know what we don't know. So I guess those two pieces, I can say I, I agree with the goal. And I, I like the building blocks. Can I ask the question, were you thinking of those building blocks as sequential? And so we start with building block one and we build upon that in a, in a, you know, very progressive manner. Is that, or are we talking about choosing which building block we, we want to? I mean, and I know we're not making decisions tonight, but I, I'm trying to understand those building blocks and what they represent. Is that, is it a roadmap or is it a choice? Can anyone answer that question?
I'll try to jump in. So really appreciate the conversation. And I tried to write down because I think there's several really key points that you made, council member Dewar. And I think, I think what you're struggling with is exactly what we're struggling with. This is a very complicated, emotional, very deep issue. So this is the first time we've had this conversation with council. And, and to come, that was the point of the report was to come with something, to have a discussion about where we are today. You, you can't talk about moving forward unless we know where we are today. And, and we sort of look at what some choices are. And that's my job is to provide council with information so that you can make informed decisions about how to move the organization forward and, and the community and what vision you have. So that, that's sort of the baseline of where we are and, and what we tried to present. And, and it is, it's, it's great to hear from the community and it's important to have them be part of, of the process. But we have to figure out what that process looks like. So again, that's the point of coming tonight. On the ELT, it is by, it is not by lack of Herculean efforts that we hoped that our ELT would be more diverse. We reached out to, we had national, we had a recruiter look for national candidates. We were very in tune with that as an ELT. We were very committed to that. We talked about that and, and the candidate pools at the time didn't offer us that opportunity. But I can tell you authentically and with a very, very deep heart that that was something that we were very cognizant of and really wanted for our ELT and weren't able to accomplish in the first couple of years as we were recruiting for that. And, and although I hope that my ELT is, we've all signed in blood and pinky swears that we're all going to be around for a while. As positions do become available, that will continue to be a priority. And, and we hope that our pools of candidates will continue to grow and that we'll have that opportunity at some point in the future. So again, sort of back to where do we go from here? This is the start of the conversation. What I need, council has never given me the direction nor indicated to me that this is a priority. So we put the, I created the, the diversity committee to begin the conversation internally. And we've shared, you know, lots of, of reports with council. I've shared with you the pride that I have. One of my favorite things at the diversity committee, actually two, one is the welcome sign at city hall. And the other is on the third floor is a map of the world. And every time an employee starts, they get a flag. And when they give their tour, given their tour, they get to put a flag or asked to put a flag either from where they come from or where they connect to. So, you know, I put two flags down. I put Germany and Southern California as, as sort of my place of origin. And so when you walk by those flags, you see the diversity that, that's in our organization. And that's why I was personally surprised by the numbers because I see that flag, that, that, that map every day. And so the numbers were lower than I had expected because I, I see the diversity and I see who I work with and I see who's on staff. But now that I'm, now that we're having this conversation, that's what I'm looking for is what do you want? Do you want to make this a goal and do you want to put city resources towards this initiative? One, I need to know that and that's the purpose of the resolution. And then the building blocks are just a way to show you sort of what choices you might have. Because this is the first time we've had the conversation. So just to come with something, right? And, and one of my, my responsibilities is to give you options. And so it shows you with existing staff, this is what we can. it shows you with existing staff, this is what we can do with some assistance of a part-time staff and some additional funds. This is what we can do. And this is what we could do with a full-time staff. So the answer is yes, it could build upon itself, right? So this is a, a multi-year initiative that will take time. We're not just going to flip on a dime and, and have a goal passed and, and, you know, everything's going to be in place in a month. This is going to take a, an extended period of time. But you could also go right to, to face, to, to step three, building block three and say, yes, I want a full-time position. This is what I want. I want to spend a hundred thousand dollars on training and software that's necessary, plus the position. That is the, the prerogative of the council. What I'm looking for is, is direction of what you want from us and specifically of me. And, and I would then build that work plan based on, on the feedback. So again, tonight is the first step, the first time we've had this conversation in almost four years that I've been here. We have a resolution that takes a stand and, and shows the community, you know, how the council feels and that we want to continue to be a welcoming community and that every person who comes to this community is either here as a business, as a visitor or a community member feels safe. And if you want the goal, then what does that goal start to look like? And, and we need to build it together. What that looks like, I don't know yet, but I'm looking forward to getting that direction from you so that we can start down this, this road and this journey together.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to knock staff. I, I was just noticing the numbers and, you know, obviously the more diverse staff is, the more representative the community, the better. But that was my only point. I, so I guess I would say, yes, I agree on the goal, having a goal. I just don't know what the goal is. Other, you know, I, I think it needs to be broader than providing city service. I really think to me there should be a conversation around, you know, some of the things that were brought up by the, by the visitors. I guess that's one thing I would ask. And then just knowing, I need the full context of what are we potentially giving up because, you know, in my mind, if, if we're giving up a full-time planner, planner, then we're also potentially impacting multifamily tax exemption, which allows for, you know, expanding our affordable housing base, which certainly is an equity issue as well. And so I, I, I don't know how to make this decision out of context with, without the, the kind of the whole budget. I know this isn't helpful, but at least I'm hoping that you understand my thought process behind it. I mean, I, I think there probably needs to be at least a part-time staffer, and especially if we're going to have some sort of commission or some, some community engagement. I think to me, the, the first step is really understanding who, or forming relationships with leaders in, within the community, you know, diverse leaders representing, you know, different, the different ethnicities and different interests, maybe religious as well. I, now I just feel like I'm talking to talk, but yeah, I'm really struggling. So I apologize. But I, I think I kind of covered where I stand, hopefully. Hopefully that helps.
It does. It helps a lot. And, and I didn't take, I took the comments about the leadership team. I, I'm glad you bring those things up. Those are important conversations to have. And I just wanted to share how, how, how much it was on our top of mind and, and how we as a team have talked about that for four years. So it was, I appreciate you opening the door to be able to have that discussion publicly. So that's how I took it as a, as a very positive comment and, and opportunity to have a conversation. And, and again, that's the challenge, right? So to bring this conversation forward, to just ask, would you like to pass the resolution, approve the resolution? And would you like me to bring it up at the October sixth budget workshop meeting or the delivery of the, of the proposed budget? Because that's right, to ask for a position tonight would be inappropriate because it's out of context. And so all I'm asking is, you know, you may tonight say, the resolution is great and, you know, that's something we'll look at down the road and, and work with existing resources. But if you would like to talk about it, then I would bring it up on October sixth and in context of a budget that will, is still not balanced and will require use of more reserves to be able to balance for twenty twenty-one. I would bring that forward then as, as another opportunity for council to discuss in context of the budget, if you would like to put monies behind this initiative. So your, your comments are right on point and I really appreciate them. They're very helpful.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so I guess, I mean, so process wise, if we wanted to consider, and again, this has never happened in all the years I've been on council, where there's been kind of a resolution put out there to the public and then the public has commented on it before. How would that work to bring it back or try to incorporate some of the comments? Or is that, because we don't typically, as a council, we're on it together. We don't, you know, so I don't, I don't know how that would work.
So, so this is the public process, right? So a, a, a resolution is written and this is the public process. So it's an opportunity for the community to provide their feedback to the, to the council. And if a majority of council is interested in making any changes to that resolution, that's a discussion you can have. And you can vote on that. And if a majority agrees to amend the resolution, you can do that this evening.
Okay. Well, the things that I heard are transparency and accountability, committing to implementation. I don't think the racial equity council, that's not something that would be a resolution. That's more of a budget decision, right? I think those are the, the, the comments that I heard that might be incorporated and I, I'd be interested in hearing what the rest of council has to say. I, I've spoken enough. So, thanks.
Yeah, I was thinking if we just take off, take the first bite at the council goal and whether we want to dedicate city resources that the city manager can bring back to the discussion October sixth as this first talking point. And then I think if, if we can discuss the resolution separate from this. Cause I, I think I'm seeing those as two separate ones topics right now, since the resolution doesn't have any action planned to it. I think that would come in our later discussions, October sixth and beyond that. So I, I just don't want to bog down in muddy discussions with that. Cause I think, you know, it's, do you support the council goal or creating this council goal? And what are your thoughts on dedicating city resources? And have that discussed?
And just for clarification, the resolution was written to incorporate the goal so that it would be then in the resolution. If the resolution is adopted, it commits to having a council goal.
Yeah.
So, so they're kind of entwined.
Yeah, I think we need to determine if there's the majority for a council goal first. And then if we don't have that goal, then we definitely need to modify it. So councilmember Agnew, I've seen you waving your little card quite a few times, so.
Well, thank you. It's time for us to have a citywide DI goal. Uh, and I, I, I believe it's time for us to have at least a part-time employee to get this building block started. I, I know financially it's not the best time, but you know, if not now, then, I mean, we start this as soon as we can start this, in my opinion. Uh, and then the resolution we'll talk about later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As you can expect, I have a lot to say about this topic. But for the sake of time, just answering the question of, do we want to make this a goal? Absolutely. It needs to be a goal for our community. We started this process a long time ago. Raise some equity within our community. Making it a welcoming city. I, I think we need to step it up and definitely make it a goal. As far as considering the resolution, I think the resolution is just a starting point to what we have. To what we're going to work on and to what we're going to bring forward in the future. There's a couple of things that I, I did want to say. So I am a hundred percent in support of the resolution, a hundred percent in support of moving forward and having the city manager bring this back in October so we can look at the budget. There's a, there's a couple of things that have been said today and I want to thank councilmember Doer for bringing this up because in the conversations we have on race and equity right now, and councilmember Doer, th- this, this is so important that you brought this up so that I can explain in the context of what I do for a living, there's not many people that look like me. And the reason is the opportunity. The opportunity comes long before I become an adult. And so systemic racism is embedded in many institutions. It doesn't mean that Bothell's institution has it. It means that other institutions along the way create that imbalance. Which means that a person that looks like me may not go down that path to become a citizen. And so we must look at things early on to understand the dynamic of how they have an effect on what we're looking at today. And that brings me to the point of having these discussions and understanding that a decision we make can also have a, a, a a negative impact on somebody's life, even though we think it's a positive decision. And that's why I thank you, um, councilmember Doer for bringing that up because it's, it's an important thing. It's important conversations to start having. When we talk about how do we start these programs and do these programs, the, the city manager said it. Renton, Bellevue, Tuckwilla, Kent. All of these cities have a huge population of diversity within their communities. And they started their initiative decades ago, ten, sometimes fifteen years ago. And they've been, they've been working very, very hard. And so they, they are far ahead of us and have a lot of answers that we need to get so that we don't go down the wrong path on some of the decisions we're going to make. And I, and, and the presentation that we had today, there's a lot of information there, but having been on all these panels regionally right now and having these discussions, that information, for you to gather that information, we're leaps ahead of where they were. They've gone through the hurdles, ups and downs. So thank you for the presentation and all the hard work. I, I can't, I can't tell you enough. I mean, we, we brought something forward on February seventh, two thousand seventeen, original goal. I don't think, I don't know if you guys remember that, but two thousand seventeen, February seventh. The power of that council when we made that decision affected my life immensely. Because I'm a black man. I am proud to be a black man. I'm proud to be the first black elected official in Bothell. And everything that I did, every, every part of my being that I serve on this council, I do for my entire community. Doesn't matter what color you are, doesn't matter how much money you have, doesn't matter what, what part of the city you live in. I treat everybody as I want to be treated fairly and equally. And on that date, February seventh, is special to me because that's my birthday. We did that on my birthday and that, that, that told me something about this community, about this council and, and where I believe we're going. So I would be remiss to say that I'm not proud of us. We've got a lot of work to do because I am proud. I know we can do the work. But I want to make sure our committee understands that the seven of us sitting here today might not be here 10 years from now. Some of us will not be here 10, 10 years from now. And the decisions we make today can be changed 10 years from now. What we need to do is make sure that the things that we're doing moving forward and implementing are going to be here beyond. And making quick decisions, fast decisions, this will work, that will work, isn't the right way. We found out the power of what a community can do when they stand together and we were able to acquire the Wayne Golf course. That, that took an entire community to make that happen and beyond. So I think that we today need to move forward with our goal. And, and I want to hear each and every one of you say it's a goal to make Bothell the most welcoming city in our region and beyond. And I want to hear each and every one of you say that it doesn't matter. Life and liberty is worth more than, we'll figure out the finances, but it's worth more to start having that conversation now and making sure that each and every one of the people in our community will listen to that and they know we're welcome. We're, we're strong together, but if we don't stand united, we don't work together, we don't tackle these tough, tough conversations. Um, I don't, I don't know where we're going to be. I'm going to save the last part of what I want to say for our council conversations tonight, but I want to thank the entire city of Bothell for making me and my family feel welcome here and safe here. Because I have the opportunity to see the inside of what all the hard work dedication you guys are doing on behalf of our community. And I will do everything in my power to reach out to those community groups and ensure they know what you're doing. Day by day, week by week, year by year, no matter where I am, no matter what I'm doing. Because I've seen it firsthand.
All right. I definitely support the DEI goal of the, of our council. I also think that where I'd like to request the city manager to bring back options on how we can devote resources to a DEI initia- initiative for our city as part of our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. So we can continue having this conversation and developing a work plan and start this long journey. Cause you know, as, as we saw in that great presentation, you know, they, they distilled a lot of the similar successful measures that we're in across the board. And those, you know, number one was having a council goal, having the leadership say that we support this and that it's a goal to increase our just inclusion or diversity and our equity. And second, I think the second one was devoting resources to it. So as, you know, a number of us have said, we are in a challenging budget time within our city, but our, our budget reflects our values. And we want to have this as one of our values, uh, just so that everyone knows where the city stands. So yeah, so city manager, I think we got clear direction that, you know, there is a support for a, a city council goal and as well as we have a majority that wants to look at implementing or dedicating city resources towards developing a work plan moving forward. Is that the direction that you were asking for as, as part of this agenda bill? Okay. So I know it kind of, it was brought up just in bits and pieces, but I just want to formally discuss the approval of our resolution that we have here. So I know there was some discussion on whether we do any modifications. I know we, so we're including a, a goal so that matches what we have in the resolution to this point. Does anyone have any discussion that they want to make on this?
Councilmember Thompson.
I just had a question. What was the process for drafting the resolution? Did we get input from any community members at all?
Uh, the process was, I drafted a resolution. I shared it with the mayor and councilmember McNeil. They made changes and then I shared that with the diversity committee. They also made changes. Uh, the process for the community to, to have input into a resolution is the council meeting. So it was great that we had the opportunity to hear from our community for council as they consider the resolution.
I would personally like to see us denounce and racism and be formally anti-racist. I think the wording of welcoming rather than anti-racist can be softened. I think the wording of welcoming rather than anti-racist can be softened, what it is that we want to say, but big picture, that's, I think the community has spoken tonight. We heard from quite a few people that said perhaps this wasn't what they wanted. So I, I think if there's a way we can invite that feedback, invite more feedback and give the community what they're asking us for, I, I would be more comfortable putting this off until we have more discussion around that.
I would agree into duration, comments that were made tonight and bring back the
Again, just to manage expectations, I would then say that that resolution won't come
Mayor, you're on mute.
Yep. Councilmember, Councilmember Thompson?
I would just say that I'd, I'd rather get it right and listen to our community than do something quickly. And I think, I think we should endeavor to do it as quickly as possible to respond to what our community is asking for, but when it comes back to me isn't nearly as relevant is making sure that the content is what our community is asking for.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
I guess I would disagree with Councilmember Thompson in that the, the several times that I have gone through this, I have thought it as being quite comprehensive and knowing the eyes that looked at this and went through it. I, I am fine with how it stands and I, and I would like to go ahead and approve this resolution so that it's backing any future goals that we've got going on.
Yeah. Interesting dilemma. Do we go and move forward right now or turn the lights off at City Hall? But, you know, if, if I was to change anything in the resolution, it would be to have a racial equity committee that works with the DI committee that we have right now. That would be adhering to what some of the people talked to us about. And it seems like a good idea. But I, I don't want to postpone this proclamation for any long period of time either. So that's a dilemma I have right now.
Councilmember Doer?
So can I ask the process question? Could, could we add the, the racial equity council or what, whatnot to the resolution? Or does that have to be voted on? I guess I'm confused about the sequence of events because we still, it seems to me that that's a budget. I don't, that we can't really add until we vote on allotting money in the budget toward that. It seems like it would be a simple solution, but I don't, process wise, it doesn't seem correct.
And I appreciate you bringing that to, to, to the forefront. That is the challenge and that was the purpose of the building blocks, to include that in the resolution. Again, it's council's discretion, but that is a long-term goal that, that, that will take time to establish and to hire the staff person and to create that. And so the idea behind the resolution again was to have a starter point, to take a stand, to let the community know how the council feels and to give guidance to the work that we're going to be doing in the future. So it's, it's just a point in time really to take a stand and to move from there. And, and the reason behind the extended timeframe then to bring a resolution back, if you're asking me to do community outreach and we're talking about a diversity, equity and inclusion resolution and you're looking for community outreach, that needs to be an inclusive, diverse outreach. And so reaching out to a few individuals who are, you know, there's 48,000 people who live in the city of Bothell and to reach out to a few individuals who happen to currently be engaged with this initiative is great, but that is not inclusion. So the work we would then need to do to make sure that we are, we are reaching out to the community and it is an inclusive process. So I can come back to you and say, yes, we went through a, an inclusive process and we're bringing you something that the community can support, will take time. And so that resolution then would be something part of the work plan that would happen in 2021 because we would then need to establish the community engagement process to have that, that work done and to make sure that, that it is authentically inclusive.
So I guess I would say the choice is no inclusivity or all in on inclusivity, but partials not.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think there's no inclusivity. I, I think again, this is a council resolution. I was asked by the mayor. He gave me the direction to.
I just met community.
Yeah, I know, but to, to work on, so it's, it's starting the conversation. I mean, this is the first time this council's had this conversation. You know, when I came here and, and I came to the council meeting in 2016, when we were talking about sanctuary cities and I brought forward the resolution, that was the welcoming resolution in early 2017, the Councilmember McNeil mentioned. From that then came the discussion at the ELT level to create the diversity committee so we could start to have those conversations internally about how we can be more diverse and inclusive and, and have equity within our organization and, and start to look at how we're doing business and reaching out to our community. So these are all building blocks that have already been happening over the last four years that, that I and the ELT are really proud of and, and the, and the, and the organization is really proud of. Again, this resolution is another step in that direction. So with the mayor's support and, and Councilmember McNeil, and I understand that he shared it with colleagues as well from the region and the diversity committee looking at it, it's just another step and, and it's, it's a moment in time to say, we're making progress and this is how far we've come. There's much more to do, but at this point in time, this is where we are. We're making this stand and, and we want to continue the work. So I guess that's what I hope that the community is seeing.
Yeah. So I guess I would pose the question to my fellow council members. Is there enough in this resolution to show an intent and is it more important to spend time on actual action than the resolution? And I, I don't know the answer to that. I guess I'd prefer to figure out what actions we want to take and, and that's only going to be shown and borne out in, in the budget. So I guess that's my viewpoint.
I think we're showing that we're taking action by saying, by directing the city manager to bring back inclusion of this into our, our budget and moving this forward. I, I think that is our action to this. And I, I think our, our resolution is, is showing where our beliefs and what we want to say to the community are. I think this is our way of showing what the, the city council beliefs are to this point and, and moving us forward to create this council goal and our initiative past this and into our 2021, 2022 budget from there. So I, I think that's the action that we're coming from with this. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Well put. Thank you, city manager. Yes, I did have the opportunity to review this resolution. I did have the opportunity to bounce this resolution off of other cities that have this form of a resolution. And this resolution is a piece of paper. The goals that we put forward are just goals until we, as a council, as a community, as a city, take action. The piece that I take away from this resolution is this does say that we're going to work within our community. This does say what we're going to, to have goals. So if you look at all of the sections within this resolution, this is talking to what we want to do as a council and giving us that first step moving forward. At no point does it say that, you know, things that the community brings up or raises won't be worked on. They absolutely will be worked on, but in order for them to be worked on, we've got to do that work with them. So this isn't saying, no, we're not going to work with the community. This is saying, we take this serious. We want to take action now. We are, we want to become what this resolution says. We will become what this resolution says, but this is the start and we've got to do the work. So I am very supportive of this resolution, not only from the fact of being a council member, but being a person of color, black man, having vetted this with other leaders around the region to understand that the words that are in here mean something tangible that we are taking action and taking the first step.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And all that was said, and I know that between Mr. Mayor and Councilmember McNeil, you kind of helped to build this resolution. I think it's a good first step and I think that comments from the community tonight will be a second step. So I'm going to support this tonight.
Councilmember Agnew?
I also will support it tonight. I was trying to bring up that racial equity committee just to kind of help the community out a little bit. I noticed in our presentation though, that you had community outreach in your second and third steps and can you change the name of that to racial equality committee? I'm good with the resolution.
Councilmember Doer?
I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't knocking the resolution. I, I was really just posing the question. I wasn't trying to create conflict or anything. I was just thinking out loud and, you know, I'm happy to go with whatever the council thinks. I was just trying to figure out what's more important, the chicken or the egg kind of thing. So, I mean, if the rest, the rest of council is comfortable, I, I do think the work, the work and what we make, the decisions we make and the budget are, are more important maybe than the resolution. The resolution's important, but not as, not as important in the, as the actions we take. So I'm fine with keeping it and spending time and energy on moving forward.
So city manager, did, we need a vote on approving this resolution? So I'll, I'll need a motion. City, Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move back into action.
Councilmember Agnew?
I second that.
All right. So we have Councilmember McNeil making a motion to approve the resolution as presented and we have Councilmember Agnew supporting or seconding that motion. Any discussion on the item? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the council members. This very thoughtful conversation, first steps, making our community welcome for all. I look forward to doing the work with you for, for many, many years, which I know is going to take a long time for us to get past this, but I want to thank each and every one of you for having this conversation.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak to the motion real fast. I absolutely agree with the heart of what this is, that it will accomplish and what the council means behind this. But I also do believe that we've heard enough from the community that they'd like it to be amended that I, I don't really want to vote either direction and I will abstain from this vote and I simply wanted to explain that before, before I did it.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll, I'll be supporting this motion, I think, you know, five, 10 years. I hope that we can be a city that other cities are looking to. Someone's doing a study and using us as a, a guiding point on directing their cities. So I think that's a goal that I can, I want to strive for. City clerk?
Say, yay, Mayor abstain when I call your name. Excuse me. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Abstain.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yay.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yay.
Mayor Olson?
Yay.
Councilmember Doer?
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yay.
Passes six zero with one abstention.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. I think it's, you know, the first of many that we'll have. And it's definitely a long road ahead and lots of work, but I look forward to doing it all, doing it with all of you in the coming years. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We now have our council conversations. Councilmember McNeil, I know you said you had an item.
Thank you. I wanted to say that I, there was a, on one of our presentations tonight, we learned a little bit about our community and the makeup of the university and how our community is changing. And I wanted to applaud our community for having a pretty diverse council. Our council's actually pretty diverse if you look at our council. So I wanted to applaud our community for that. There's a saying that happens at SCA and Vienna Dawson, who runs SCA and Mayor Ralph from Kent, talk about this saying often. The saying is, for that what you do for me without me, you do too. And the reason I bring that up is the power of the conversations we all have together. And I want for all of us to look at how we engage with one another and think about what it means, the way we engage with each other to our community, the decisions that we make, how that looks to our community. And I think it's important that once we take a deep dive inside and understand where each of our lenses are coming from, I think we truly understand where our community is coming from and can truly listen to that. I've had the opportunity to reach out to many people within the community here recently, young folks have been, have been, or Councilmember Doer knows, I've been doing a new panel, had an opportunity to discuss a little bit with her the other day. But my eyes are wide open now, the innocence of these 14 kids from the North Shore School District and the connection that they all have without knowing they're all through their different lenses and through their different cultures. So it was just, it's been pretty cool to be part of that and, and to, it's opened my eyes to how special it is, really is here, here in Bothell. And I want to leave you with something to think about as we move forward in this equity and diversity and inclusion and welcoming city piece. And I want to ask all of you to reach back out to me at some point, but not through me, but maybe through all of the city managers, because I don't want to make any violations. There was a question that came up here recently about, when in life did you know that you raised that? But there was a question that came up here recently about when in life did you know that your race mattered? When in life did you know that your race mattered? And I answered that question, and I'm going to say it publicly now. And I think Councilmember Dewar and Agnew, those who were here at my first swearing in, remember there was a special gentleman who was in the audience. That gentleman was my sixth grade teacher. And that sixth grade teacher saved my life. As a young man, I did not understand what was happening to me. But that day, I realized that my race mattered because he stopped what was happening to me by being called the N-word every day during school. So I ask each of you to look back and see when you knew that your race mattered. Hopefully, I look forward to getting a shot. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dewar.
So I don't talk about my race much at all, but to answer your question, because it's kind of a funny story and sad, is that I knew in kindergarten when someone called me a chink. And he was a boy that was a couple of years older than me. And no one will be surprised that my response was to take my nails and drag them down his face as a kindergartner. And he never called me that name again. I think the value in knowing that is that we all have experiences that other people don't necessarily know about. And they're all valid and they all paint our lives. And nobody knows what you've experienced. Not, people don't necessarily see, you know, all this gone into you becoming who you are. And I just, I think the best thing you can do as you go through life is to give people grace and understand that you don't know what's happened to them to make them who they are. And so I appreciate your comments, Councilmember James McNeil. But I just wanted to point that out. I don't talk about it a lot, myself being an Asian American because I, you know, maybe I have a little bit of imposter syndrome because I'm only half Chinese. And I think I probably get away with appearing to be, you know, white. But I've had experiences too, and I just don't talk about them as much because I, they, I'm sure they don't compare to yours. But they've still happened and they still have formed who I am. And I think we all have those experiences, whether or not we're a person of color or not. You know, I'm sure lots of us have experienced bullying and those types of things and just give people grace is what I would say. And I just wanted to let people know that I'm having a council conversation on the 30th. The topic is race and because of OPMA and all that stuff, I can't invite everyone to come. Normally, I'm begging people to come and not, and not always getting a lot of interest. But I just wanted everyone to know in the interest of transparency that the library reached out to me because I've had these over the last five years. And we're going to try a Zoom council conversation. And hopefully, I don't know that it'll be recorded, but I'm happy to report back how that goes. I'm slightly terrified because I'm certainly no expert in the topic. But I have, I have become an expert in having community conversations where we have, you know, really difficult conversation or questions posed. And, you know, I'm terrified it might not be a success, but I feel it's worth the risk because it's so important to start the conversation and not be scared to have it. So I just thought I'd let you all know.
Councilmember McCullough.
Always been to celebrate all of our different cultures. So if someday within the city, we can like celebrate each of our cultures, Lebanese, Italian, Japanese, you know, African American, our children need to learn the value of all of our cultures. And so I hope one day, as we move forward and get out of the pandemic, we can find a way to celebrate the different cultures and our different diversities. Because it's the only way our kids are going to learn to appreciate who they are. I appreciate who I am because I was brought up as a Lebanese and Italian person who I know the food, I know the dance, and I value that. I want everyone to value their culture. And once we can do that as a, as a community, then all of our families and children can learn the values of each of us. So that's my little cultural piece tonight. I love to meet with the cultural leaders in our community so I could hear more about what they want us to be doing as we move forward with this goal. And so that's one of my requests. I'm not sure that it can happen, but it is my request. And then second, I want to share with you that during the pandemic and Main Street has been closed, that restaurants and the shop owners are very grateful for this opportunity. But the pandemic is not getting any better. The smoke caused even more problems this last week for them. And the request I'm hearing from our restaurants and shop owners is through the pandemic, could we continue to close Main Street so that it can be that community place that people want? Now, the reason we need to make this decision pretty early is it's going to cost them quite a bit to invest going through the winter. Whether they do heaters or whether they do whatever it takes. And I know that we said we would keep it open until October 26th, but if we could come up with at least some kind of, I guess consensus, that would be it, consensus, that we would see it through the pandemic, that would help them to be able to invest to get through the winter. So that's my request. I hope each of you will consider it and share that with me or with the people from Main Street. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes, I would, I would more than support it. I assume campuses, it sounds like campus is going to be closed all academic year. So anytime our city manager, mayor wanted to put it on our agenda to discuss sooner than later, I'd be happy to see that through the winter. So, because it's not going to, we're just talking about the section on Main Street that's between 102nd and 101st, right? Yeah, no, I would love to have that discussion sooner than later for that very same reason. I have a little PSA that's off topic. I got this in the mail today. You guys can read that the right way, right? So for the few who are watching, get the word out. I don't know that this is on the city website, but you can get applications for emergency financial assistance down at the North Shore Senior Citizen Center. I'm cheating and reading the back here. And you have to be a resident, you have to live in Bothell proper in order to qualify for it. But people who could use assistance, check it out.
Yeah, the CARES Act. Yeah. Yes, thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
I just agree with Councilmember McCullough and Councilmember Zornz. You know, restaurants aren't going to be allowed to go past 50% capacity until phase four. And I, like I said, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to provide a life raft to these restaurants and cede them a portion of the way through the pandemic. So if that comes up, I would fully support just having it closed until phase four.
Councilmember Dewar.
Me too.
Yeah, I definitely agree that it should be a topic that we discuss. And I think Councilmember McCullough makes a good point about the owners, operators having to invest in that and would benefit by having some consistency or, you know, just something to rely on, on to balance out their cost with how long they could use it out there. So I think it's definitely a good discussion to have.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Could we also include other restaurants? I completely forgot about them, which I'm embarrassed. But other restaurants that are using parking spaces as well when we do talk about this and going to phase four makes perfect sense. So. So we're not having to redo baby steps and re, it is prudent that we are doing this step by step. But I think we see a trend now and we can save time with staff by saying phase four, Main Street, parking spots like the cottage, just, just, just put it in a holding pattern until we're through this pandemic.
Councilmember Dewar.
I move. We put us out of our misery so we can all go ahead.
Councilmember McCullough, second. Thumbs up for adjournment. All right. Thank you, everyone, for a great council meeting tonight. We'll stay safe out there. Avoid that smoke.